Good evening, everyone. This time we'll call the Tuesday, June 17th, 2014 meeting of the Iredell County Board of Commissioners to order. This time I'll call upon Commissioner Gene Howe to lead us in our invocation. Mr. Howe?
May bow your heads. Heavenly Father, thank you for our many blessings. Thank you that we live in a free country where we as citizens can come together as a free people and dialogue and agree to disagree respectfully. Please give us all wisdom as we embark on the important decisions that will impact our citizens and our children. Help us to continue to live by faith and give you all the glory, Lord. Help us to remember in a free society it is okay for us to disagree. It does not make one side wrong or one side right. It makes us different. Help us to make the best objective decisions we can based on the facts before us. Help us remember that in this country, government is of the people, by the people, and for the people. Please continue to bless this county, the state, and the United States of America. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Okay. This evening, we have the pleasure of having members of Troop 609 of the First ARP Church, and they are John Mark Williamson, Briggs McIlwery, and Will Clont, who will come forth and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. If you gentlemen would come through the gate here. Let's all rise and join them in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please remember, you know how the SCALP form on, just close your back handed apart. SCALP. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen. I'll call upon our county manager, Ron Smith. Ms. Smith, are there any adjustments coming from the staff this evening?
I have no adjustments, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Are there any adjustments from any member of the board? Not? The floor is open for a motion for adoption of this agenda as presented.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve this agenda, and it comes from Commissioner Griffith. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We have no presentation of special recognitions and awards that I'm aware of this evening that brings us to appointments for the board. And this evening, we had Ms. Anna Rice of Iredell County Council on Aging to share county funding plan for the Home and Community Care Block Grant for older adults. Ms. Rice, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As I was thinking about my annual trip to give you information about our aging funding plan for the coming fiscal year, I rather thought I was like a swallow returning to Capistrano. So, I'm glad to be with you this evening. I'm here to present the Fiscal Year 2015 Proposed Aging Funding Plan for your review and consideration, and I believe you have a copy of that. The reality is, we are aging in Iredell, and the need for services continue. Current statistics indicate we have 31,000 people aged 60 and better in our county. In a little over 10 years, in 2025, the prediction is that Iredell will then have 47,000 older adults, 60 and older. Not surprisingly, the 80s group is increasing very fast, too, and will double in the next 10 years. Some have turned this the aging tsunami, and I think we're there. The challenge, then, is to provide a range of services for not only a growing senior population, but also a diverse group of seniors. The baby boomer who just turned 60 and lost his job, or the 65-year-old who must make a decision about a Medicare Part D prescription plan, or even the 92-year-old who still comes to the senior center for chair exercise. And what about the 85-year-old struggling to stay in her home, in her community, and in her comfort zone? The proposed 2015 Aging Funding Plan reflects our work to continue providing vital services for our county's older adults. This includes transportation for the senior recently diagnosed with macular degeneration. She can no longer drive, and she needs to get to her medical appointments, or PT, or even the VIP, Visually Impaired Support Group meeting at the senior center. With our in-home services, we'll help the 69-year-old double amputee who navigates around her modest home in a wheelchair. Now unable to manage many of the basic housekeeping tasks, our chore workers visit her weekly to help with vacuuming and mopping, or changing the linens, and keeping her house tidy, and probably more importantly, safe, so she can remain in her own home as long as possible. In what is always a true labor of love, an 85-year-old wife weary from over 25 years of caregiving for her 87-year-old husband, who suffers from a progressive neurological disease, will receive our respite services, giving her a chance to catch her breath and take a break without worrying that her husband will wander out of the house, or attempt to make coffee and burn himself, or leave the stove on. We'll continue providing nutrition services throughout the county, offering congregant meals in Mooresville, Troutman, Statesville, and Harmony, providing a gathering place for seniors to enjoy a balanced meal, as well as that all-important social contact and interaction on a daily basis. For those too frail to leave home, volunteers will deliver a meal and a smile in that vital human contact to the isolated elderly senior who maybe really appreciates seeing a quote-unquote "friend" more than the meal itself. Or maybe the volunteer will attempt to deliver a meal to the couple, former meals volunteers, who are now both in their 90s, married some 70 years, only to find that the door is locked, the husband, who uses a wheelchair, is unable to get out of bed by himself, yet his wife is not responding. Although sadly EMS found his wife had passed away in her sleep on this day, the homebound meals volunteer was a virtual lifeline for the newly widowed spouse. For seniors of all ages, from 60 to 100, needing a variety of services, we'll continue providing countless opportunities at our Iredell and South Iredell Senior Centers, both certified as Centers of Excellence by the Division of Aging and Adult Services. It could be participation in the newly formed Parkinson Support Group coordinated by a recently diagnosed participant. It could be chair exercise led by a senior. It could be Tai Chi to improve balance and prevent devastating falls, or water exercise to deal with limited mobility, or even chronic back pain. It could be a healthy living class designed to help seniors manage chronic diseases like diabetes or hypertension. It could even be a driver's refresher course to improve driving skills, or a computer class to learn how to email a grandchild, or yes, surf the net. It might be a workshop on avoiding scams and identity theft, or being prepared for a disaster. Or what about a series of classes entitled Powerful Tools for Caregivers aimed at helping that overwhelmed 70-year-old daughter take care of her 90-year-old father and herself? Maybe it's meeting with a ship volunteer to help cut through the Medicare maze and choose a supplemental policy. It might even be chess, or canast, or bridge, or cribbage, or dominoes, any of a number of card and board games that require focus and attention, keeping the mind active and engaged in mental decline at bay. All these services, services along the continuum of care for active to frail elderly and those in between, are available through the Older Americans Act and the Home and Community Care Block Grant. As you may recall, Older American Act dollars require a 10% local match, and the county helps the COA meet this requirement, and in doing so, brings back $9 in federal monies for every dollar contributed by the county, and we appreciate this vital support. I would be glad to answer any questions you might have about the proposed plan that you have in front of you, and appreciate your consideration in approving the 2015 Aging Funding Plan.
Does anyone have any questions, Ms. Rice? Ms. Rice, is there any action that we need to take, or is this just a...
Yes, the board needs to approve the plan.
Okay. Okay. If there's no questions, the floor is open for a motion.
Make a...
Go ahead.
I make a motion that we approve the 2015 Aging Funding Plan.
Okay. Any discussion on Mr. Howe's motion for approval? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. We have no public hearings this evening. We'll move to administrative matters, and I'll recognize our county manager, Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item A, which is memo number two, is a request for adoption of Fiscal Year 2014-15 Iredell County Budget Ordinance. And in accordance with GS 15913, the board has to adopt the budget by July 1st, and we are in the last stage of this, and adopting the budget ordinance tonight would adopt a budget of $167,347,780. Now, this is up about $73,000 from what was presented to you on May 6th. However, that's basically recognizing additional seized funds to be applied towards the crime lab, and we'll also take that $73,000 and put it towards our future Facilities Improvement Fund that would not have to be spent in the crime lab. I'd be glad to answer any questions that you have, and I would recommend approval.
Any questions, Mr. Smith?
I just want to say thank you to you and all the staff for all the hard work you put into the budget this year.
Okay. Any other questions? Hearing none, the floor is open for a motion.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion to approve the 2014-15 Iredell County Budget Ordinance. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Item B, which is memo number three, is a request from the Finance Department to approve a Budget Amendment Number 37 to appropriate insurance proceeds, and Susan Robertson will make that presentation.
Thank you. This year, we have had several accidents involving county equipment and vehicles, and I'd ask that you approve this budget amendment that will recognize the $22,000 in general fund proceeds that we've received, $16,794 for ICATS, $5,338 for solid waste, and $1,037 for EMS.
Any questions, Ms. Robertson? Floor is open for a motion.
Motion to approve Budget Amendment 37.
Motion for approval comes from Commissioner Griffith. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Item C is a request from DSS to approve Budget Amendment Number 38 to recognize additional allocations, and Yvette Smith, our DSS Director, will make that presentation.
Thank you. The department received some additional funding in our Crisis Intervention Program in the amount of $19,479 that I'm asking for the board's approval.
Any questions, Ms. Smith? If not, floor is open for a motion.
Motion to approve Budget Amendment Number 38.
We have a motion to approve from Vice Chairman Norman. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Items D and E are both requests from Animal Services, and they're both for Budget Amendments Number 39 and 40, and Brad Gates, our Director, will make that presentation.
Thank you. Item D, memo number five, we have $2,512 in donated funds. The funds came from the PetSmart Charities Adoption Fund, and this is basically the same allocation... I'm sorry, that's... It came from donated funds. Donated funds completely for this project. This is the same project that you approved April 1st. This is the same request as April 1st, but the fund amount is just funds donated strictly to this program from local donors. With the last request for funds, so far, we've altered 63 animals to date on the free spay neuter program, and the new funds will continue the life of this program.
Okay. Any questions, Mr. Gates? Not? Floor is open for a motion.
Motion to approve Budget Amendment Number 39.
We have a motion to approve from Commissioner Robertson. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. The next item, this is the PetSmart Adoption Rewards money, I'm sorry about that. We have funds donated, $2,512 donated, and we'd like to use the funds to be placed in our advertising budget, so we can advertise our special events and services, including our adoptable animals and special adoption needs animals. We'd like to use this to advertise the donation-funded programs, our fundraisers, and our public education classes and events.
Okay. Any questions, Mr. Gates? Not? Floor is open for a motion.
Motion to adopt Budget Amendment Number 40.
Motion to approve Budget Amendment Number 40 comes from Commissioner Robertson. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I'm going to turn the next three items, F, G, and H, over to Susan Robertson.
Thank you. Dr. Kenny Miller submitted four applications for lottery proceeds. The first to reimburse ISS for a final payment to the town of Mooresville for water and sewer to Woodland Heights; the second to reimburse $66,000 for a paving project at Lake Norman High School; the third to reimburse $61,800 for a paving project at Cloverleaf; and to reimburse $204,950 for debt service to Energy United for mechanical system controls update. These projects will be funded 100... These reimbursements 100% by lottery proceeds.
Any questions? Floor is open for a motion.
Motion to approve Budget Amendment 41.
We have a motion to approve Budget Amendment Number 41 from Commissioner Griffith. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. The next is an item to approve the Capitol Project Ordinance for West Iredel High School's HVAC project. This is funded $1.3 million from the red leg loan proceeds USDA through Energy United. In addition, ISS is contributing $303,000 for the project, and you can see that the cost, general construction, $1,560, architects fees, $20,000, closing costs, $3,017, and contingency of $20,000.
Okay. Any questions, Ms. Robertson? Not? Floor is open for a motion.
Make a motion to approve the Amendment Project Ordinance for the West Iredel High School HVAC project to appropriate architect fees.
Okay. We have a motion to approve this request from Commissioner Howe. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
The next item I have is your approval of a three-year contract with Compensation Claim Solutions. They are the third-party administrator for our self-insured workers' compensation fund. The price will be $23,000 for FY '15, and it will go up to $25,000 for Fiscal Years '16 and '17. They have done a very good job handling our claims for us, and since we've been self-insured, just basing a 4% annual increase on the last bid we had for fully insured, we've saved about $3.8 million.
Any questions, Ms. Robertson? Not? Floor is open for a motion.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve from Vice Chairman Norman. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
I'm going to present the next two memos, Item I and... Items I and J together. The first one is Memo 10, and this is a presentation of the resolutions calling for a geo-bond referendum by the three school systems, Iredel, Statesville, Mooresville Graded, and Mitchell Community College. We had had discussion prior to this meeting about potentially including a jail project in this same request, and upon strong recommendation from the local government commission, we are proposing that you take that off, out of consideration. And based on that, Memo Number 10, which is the next one on the list, has removed... You have an amended Memo 11, and that removes the jail from consideration. Now, there's no action that'll be taken on Memo Number 10, which will be the presentations from the school systems. However, there will be required action, if you so choose, under Memo Number 11, Item J. Once we get through the presentations with the schools, and you're satisfied with those presentations, I'll ask Susan Robertson to come up and talk about Memo Number 11. And we're going to start with the Iredel Statesville Schools.
Thank you. Chairman Johnson, members of the board, and Mr. Smith, I'm here tonight on behalf of the Iredel Statesville Schools Board of Education to present a resolution calling for a geo-bond referendum. I think you have a copy of that in front of you already, endorsed by the Iredel Statesville Schools Board at its last meeting. I want to thank especially Mr. Johnson, Mr. Norman, for your participation with us on a task force that has reviewed our needs for the Iredel Statesville Schools, the Mooresville Graded Schools, and the Mitchell College institutions over the last couple of years, and came to some recommendations back in 2012. We have several members of that task force attending tonight, and I want to show our appreciation for those members attending. We have tried to maintain our order of our priorities of these projects, and have been able to complete a few of the smaller projects over the last couple of years while we waited for the financing situation to improve. So, some of those projects on the task force recommendation have already been done by other financial means. You have a copy of our proposed bond projects, five different ones that are our larger projects. I have Mr. Brady Johnson here with me tonight, our superintendent, to discuss those in further detail, and Mr. Kenny Miller available to also answer questions about any specific details. So, I'll ask Mr. Johnson to describe these projects in further detail.
Chairman Johnson, Commissioners, Mr. Smith, thank you for this opportunity to come in and talk about our projects. In conjunction with the Facilities Task Force and working with our staff, we have identified five projects that we would like to include in our portion of a potential bond referendum. Project One is Cool Springs Elementary School. That project is estimated at a cost of $13.5 million. Cool Springs is an aging facility in the eastern part of our county. That project, in addition to making major renovations to the school, would also increase the seat capacity by 200 students. Project Number Two is at North Iredel High School. This is an addition and renovation of the building there that houses the old gymnasium and the current auditorium. On the main level of that is the auditorium. In the basement of that building is classrooms and multipurpose rooms, the old band room, chorus room. That project is estimated at $9.5 million, and in addition to the classrooms that will be added there, that capacity will increase the seat capacity at North Iredel High School by 150 seats. At South Iredel High School, it's a very similar project. As you know, both those schools were built in 1966, and they are mirror images of each other. So, the auditorium, which is again joined to the old gymnasium, would be raised there. We would be putting in an additional four to six classrooms, which would raise the seat capacity there by 150 students. South Iredel is a little bit more in need there. We put the IB program, the diploma program, there a few years ago, and it has attracted a lot of students from all over the county. So, currently on the campus of South Iredel High School, we do have one mega unit, which is seven mobile classrooms, one quad, which is four mobile classrooms, and this summer, Dr. Miller and his staff are going to be adding some classrooms, six classrooms, at the Career Academy in Troutman, and those six classrooms are going to be to handle the overload that is currently in existence at South Iredel High School. So, that project at South Iredel will help address some of that overcrowding. Project Number Four is a combination project of Northview IB School and Statesville Middle School. As you know, we opened the IB program about five years ago. The Statesville campus is located on the old campus of Northview Elementary School. And I will stress to you that a lot of folks have forgotten, but Northview was a K-2 school. So, we are using a K-2 facility for a middle school, and that has been a challenge. That school, too, is very overcrowded, and we have a number of mobile units on that campus. Northview does not have an auditorium. It does not have a gymnasium, and so we bus children each day from Northview to the YMCA for their PE classes. What we would like to do, and what we're proposing here, is to move the current Statesville Middle School, which is located in East Statesville, to the campus of Third Creek Elementary School. We already have the land there, and we propose building a new Statesville Middle School and moving the current Statesville Middle School to that campus. That would give us a capacity there for additional seats and raise that capacity to about 650 seats at the new Statesville Middle School. We would then renovate and move the students from Northview into the current campus of Statesville Middle School. I hope I haven't confused you with all that movement there. But that would also leave us with a vacant building. Northview is, again, a K-2 school, but what we would propose doing there is some minor renovations and move our alternative school, which is currently housed at Monticello up on Highway 90, into Northview. And that would mean that Monticello campus then would be available, and what we would propose is probably to put that on the market. It is in the middle of an industrial complex, and we feel like that we could probably sell that to an industrial investor. Project Number Five is a very similar project, but it's on the southern end of the county. It involves an IB school and a traditional middle school. Here, the partnership is between Mountmore IB and Brawley Middle School. Once again, the IB program on the southern end of the county has been very popular with parents. It is operating at capacity. What we propose doing there is moving the current Brawley Middle School to the campus of Woodland Heights. We already have the land there, and so we would build a new middle school there and move Brawley Middle School into that new building. We would then renovate the current Brawley Middle School and move the IB school, which is housed at Mountmore, into that property. That would give us a second vacancy of land there, and in the current Mountmore property, we feel like that we could have a couple options there. It could certainly be available to put another choice program in there, which is very popular with parents, or we don't think that we'd have any trouble selling that property if it was put on the market. Both those projects are estimated at $23.5 million, which brings our total to $79.5 In your packet of materials is a breakdown of the Cool Spring project and the two middle schools. I'll give you an opportunity to look at that. Dr. Miller... Dr. Miller is here, of course, and will be happy to give you much more detail about any one of the five projects, and of course, will be available to answer any questions that you have for us. And I'll turn it over to Dr. Miller now to expand upon those five projects.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. One clarification on the South Iredell, North Iredell projects. They also include a canopy replacement. We have canopies there that are concrete, and they're beginning to fall, and actually pieces of them fall, so we'll be replacing those canopies as well. We will be increasing the footprint of the existing auditorium to accommodate the population. For instance, South Iredell is at almost 1,400. They have an auditorium that's in very bad condition, and we would increase the size of that auditorium to about 600, 650. Right now, it's about 490. Recommendations are that you have about one-half your student body. Be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions?
When the last bond was passed, was Cool Springs designated on that bond?
No, ma'am. The last bond that was passed was Phase 1. It was a bond referendum and COPS. That was completed on time and on budget. Phase 2 was entirely under COPS. Phase 3 was never funded because the economy went south and funding was not available, and we had two projects in Phase 3, Cool Springs, Union Grove. Union Grove, we were able to fund from paying off a previous debt service, and we were able to fund that project through a different means. Cool Springs never was funded.
You mentioned that Northview would become the alternative, the location for the alternative school?
Possibility.
Some of the reason that you're doing renovations now is because the K-2, it's a K-2 school and you have middle school? Do you not foresee a problem with moving high schoolers into that facility?
Alternative school right now is about 100 students, and there are students in and out. Sometimes there'll be as few as 50, 55. Sometimes there'll be as many as 130. So, it's a very small population. We have two mega units at that location right now to house the students in the IB program. That program is under a lottery, and we can't expand that program due to the size of that campus and due to the lack of a gymnasium. The alternative school does not need a gymnasium. That's not a necessity for the alternative program. It also is a much smaller population for the cafeteria and the kitchen areas. Classrooms, they could handle, so it's just much better fit than the IB students.
My last question for the moment is, projects number 2 and 3 are placed on this list, but it does not appear that when the task force did their assessment, that projects 2 and 3 were even on the radar for the task force. Why are they, why are they on this list for this bond? Why were they?
They actually were on the radar. They were in Phase 5. We had Phase 4, 5, and 6. Phase 4 was a number of smaller, maintenance-related upgrades and upfits, and the middle schools and some other Cool Springs. We also had a technology piece on there. Since then, we have gotten a $20 million grant for technology. We've completed the Redleg project, which you just passed. The Redleg project was one of those projects we did at West Iredell. That's a million and a half. We did several million dollars in lottery and annual recurring capital and maintenance. So, that freed up some monies that we could move some projects up that are three years old now. But, when those were done, it was two years ago. Now, we're looking at third year. By the time there's an issuance of bonds, it'll be another year or two. So, we're getting into that, you know, fifth phase. So, those were the top two projects in the fifth phase that we moved over.
So, are all the projects in Phase 4 completed?
Just about all the projects are complete, yes. And we've got plans to complete those out of annual recurring capital.
Okay, I've got a fair number of questions, and just so everybody knows, some of these questions are questions that I had asked the superintendents ahead of time, so I got to ask them, I got to hear the answers, I'd like for you to hear the answers. Some of these questions are questions that I've heard other people ask, and instead of me answering the question, I'm going to let you answer the question. And then some have come from emails that I've received. So, if you don't like the question, okay, just bear with us, because it's best if these questions get asked now and get answered now, okay? And Dr. Edwards, you're next. So, some of these questions will be asked of you as well, and just so the audience knows, they will have different situations, so the fact that we're asking the same question is actually relevant and appropriate. So, I'm going to start out. I don't care which of you answers it, just whoever feels like it. Some may question the wisdom of spending this much money on a bond now, because if student population increases in the near future, that will leave us no money to expand seats for a growing student population. You've already mentioned so far, you said Cool Springs, this will increase your capacity by 200 students, North Iredell by 150, South Iredell by 150, but you did not include the middle, the middle school projects. How many additional seats will that provide so that we can kind of come up with a total?
The new State'sville Middle School that will be built on the campus of Third Creek Elementary will have a capacity of 650. And so, that's 650 new seats for middle school. The Mountmore project, which includes Brawley Middle School and building the new Brawley Middle on the campus of Woodland Heights, will have a capacity of 800 seats. And so, that will be 800 middle school seats in the southern end of the county.
Let me see if I understand. Under project 4, combined, those will increase a total of 650 seats. Is that what you're saying?
The new school that will be located on the campus of Third Creek, that school stand alone will have 650 new seats.
Okay. Now, just to clarify, I think I know what you're asking. When you move Northview to State'sville Middle, State'sville Middle is, right now, the capacity at State'sville Middle is, let me get it right here so I have it exact, 680. So, when we move the Northview campus there, there'll be about 500 students. So, that'll leave 180. When we move the 420-odd students at State'sville Middle over to their new campus, that'll leave you with about 240 additional seats. So, the total number of seats would be around 350, 60 of new seats. And the middle school is the one area where we do have needed seats. We're pretty good on the elementary. High school is going to be an issue down the road, but we think we've got a good plan to stem the tide on that by increasing our IB program in South and increasing our capacity with an overload that we can have at our CAT Center. Then, we can accommodate some additional students. That helps to keep the load away from Lake Norman High for a while, and we have two mega units at Lake Norman High, which can also be a relief. So, it gives us good capacity throughout the system to move forward for at least another four to five years.
Okay. All right, so if I add all this stuff up, I came up with 1,950 students before you explained that there may actually be another 300 in there. So, we're looking at something just north of 2,000 additional seats carrying capacity, you know, irrespective of which grade they're in. Okay. Next question is, Iredell State'sville proposes the $47 million to renovate these existing schools to house IB programs. If an IB program simply teaches a different curriculum, then why can't they remain at their current locations? Why do you have to renovate a school at great cost to house an IB program?
Yeah, two parts. Number one, the IB program is much more than just the curriculum. That program covers every square inch of this county, so the children attending those three schools come from every nook and cranny of this county. Those programs are heavily required to do additional staff development for those teachers. And to be quite honest with you, we do not have the resources to open IB programs and do the extra training and include the extra material required to run those programs in multiple sites all over the county. So, what we have chosen to do is to have a State'sville campus and a Moore'sville campus, and then South Iredell, the diploma program is in the middle. That is not ideal by any stretch of the imagination, but it does allow us to plug that program in in our county and to have done that during really tough, challenging economic times.
But, why do you have to renovate the school to move the IB program into a school?
Yeah, Kenny will answer that.
Yeah, there's not very much renovation at all. We'll do that internally through annual recurring capital, and it's mainly paint-up, fix-up, upgrades and some things, but there's not, those are occupied schools now.
Right.
So, there's not a lot involved in renovations. It's mostly the new construction.
Okay, so the $23,500?
Does not include renovation.
Is, that's primarily your, the cost of the new structure?
That's correct. That's new construction.
Correct. Okay. All right. If Iredell State'sville school system, for the past couple of years, you've actually had a declining student population that attended your schools. So, two questions ago, I challenged you, gee, aren't you building enough seats? Now, I'm going to challenge you, why are you adding any seats at all if your student population has gone down?
Well, when you're talking about building schools, you have to look years and years down the road, and I do think that Iredell County is poised to see the same growth that we had before the recession. And before the recession, we were growing at 900 students per year, and that's a school per year. I hope we never get put back in that position again.
Right.
But, we have the potential for that, particularly on the southern end of the county. The other part of that question, I would say, is we currently have four charter schools in Iredell County, and they're serving approximately 1,600 students. On any given day, one of those schools could close, and what would happen to those 1,600 children? They would come back to us, and we have to be poised to address that should it occur. We're working very, very hard also to be very competitive and make sure that we are being efficient, effective, and on the cutting edge with educational innovation. And so, we are in competition for students now. The General Assembly of North Carolina has made it clear that in North Carolina, there will be charter schools and that public schools had better get ready to be competitive and go after their market share of those students.
You're saying that we need to be prepared, if a charter school closes, to take those students? Can, if the school closes, can we not buy their building?
You certainly could do that. I mean, that would be a decision that we would bring to this body of elected officials, but I don't think there's any reason that you could not. Now, I will say that it's getting a little more complicated in North Carolina, because we do have charter schools now that are for-profit, and those buildings are owned by investors. They're, the landscape and the way that charter schools operate in North Carolina has become very complex in the last few years.
Okay. Let me add in just a minute. Also, we have no charter schools that are going to be opening next year. The state is, and this is state numbers, and we think they'll be higher, is estimating that we will grow 165 kids next year, just state. Okay, state's usually low. In addition, there's 2,000 units just inside the Moore'sville city limits that are not in Moore'sville Grade that are on the books right now, not counting Port Church Road and the other areas. We would be remiss if we didn't position ourselves in advance of that kind of growth. And so, we feel like that we're positioning the county to absorb that growth without having to come up with another huge bond down the road.
Mitchell College has a program where a lot of high school seniors can go earn college credits by attending Mitchell. Is that not relieving your pressure to house or to provide literal seats at the high school level?
It does. We have approximately 525 students in the early college program, and we are fortunate that we have two early colleges. One of those is located on the campus of State'sville High School. The other is located on the campus of Mitchell Community College. And if Dr. Brewer ever came to me and said he no longer has capacity to house those students on that campus, I have no idea where I would put those 225 students. The best guess would probably be West Iredell High School, but State'sville High School, South Iredell High School, and Lake Norman High School are all at or over capacity currently. And I tell you, it scares me a little bit when I think about the growth, again, particularly on the southern end of the county, of where we're going to house our high school students in the next 10 years.
Guess I need to be nicer to Dr. Brewer. Okay. We're told that the future is science, technology, engineering, and math, the STEM, yet this bond has two different auditoriums for Iredell State'sville school system. You know, when I think of auditoriums, I think of teaching students to be musicians and singers and actors and dancers. You know, wouldn't this money be better spent building chemistry and physics labs and agricultural programs and stuff like that?
Right. I think you have to have a balanced approach. You know, you certainly want children to have a holistic experience in the curriculum of their endeavors in high school. I do like to say that I think, in my opinion, that we were ahead of the curve in building science buildings and laboratories. Just real quickly, we, at South Iredell High School and North Iredell High School, we built science buildings, and they're all devoted to science classrooms in 2001. At State'sville High School, during their renovation a few years ago, 2006, many of the science classrooms and laboratories there are in that new portion of the building. So, we're in good shape with science classrooms there. In 2007, in 2009, we did renovations again at South Iredell and North Iredell High School, respectively, and added classrooms when that new gymnasium complex was built. There were four science labs and labs put in each one of those buildings as well. So, at our high school campuses, we feel like we're in pretty good shape for science space.
At West, at West Iredell.
Yes.
We also did West Iredell. We put science labs in at West Iredell, too. These auditoriums have been pushed aside for a long, long time, and so, it's just, it's time to do those.
Okay. A good question is, okay, your auditoriums have the seating capacity of, you said, four?
490.
490. You want to make it go to 600?
6, 650.
Okay. And unlike a traditional school building where you can add a wing or add a few classrooms, auditorium, it's kind of hard to, you know, to add an extra 150 seats in the back, and basically you have to raise it and start over again, correct?
The one that's existing. The recommendation by the state, these are state recommendations, not mine, is that your auditorium should be approximately the size of half your student population.
Okay, but I mean, if we get another 100 students, we're not going to tear this one that we're building down?
No, oh, no, no. This is going to be another.
For another 50, so I'm trying to, I'm playing devil's advocate with you.
Yeah, before, you're right. Before this auditorium, anything else would be done, we'd be building another high school. This high school would not get that large.
Okay. All right. The challenge is, is in order to add an additional 200 seats, does that really render the existing auditorium worthless? Don't worry, I'll be asking Moore'sville the same questions.
Yeah. Well, let me, these two auditoriums both have structural issues.
They do.
They do.
What are their structural issues?
North Iredell is settling, and if you go in North Iredell's lobby at the lower portion, the doors will not close properly because they're starting to drag on the IBs and stuff that hold that up. Now, we've had engineers look at it. It's not dangerous, but in order to correct some of those problems, it's going to cost as much or more than to raise it and to replace it, especially since we need a larger capacity as well.
And that's at north?
That's at north. South Iredell has a crack in the foundation, and we've had a structural engineer check that as well. It's not going to fall, however, it's one of those issues. It's not gonna fall, however, it's one of those issues where, once you get into it and you start determining what, what you're gonna have to do to fix it, you're gonna be looking at more than it would take to raise it and increase the footprint and bring it up to modern standards.
When, when you, when you, y'all looked at your estimates on cost per square foot, for, whether it's middle school, elementary school, high school, whatever, how do you know if your construction cost estimates are in line with the best, standard best practices?
Well.
And typical construction costs?
Of course, nobody can predict what the construction industry's gonna do. But we have a, a track record of a decade. Rob Jackson's our construction manager, he has a track record of a decade of working with contractors, working with architects and engineers, and estimating. His estimates have been very, very, very good. So we go with that, as well as the engineers and architects we work with. They know the bid, the bid climate, the way it's going. We also try to look at escalation because we know the project may be planned for now, but it may be two years before it starts. So we try to build in a little bit of escalation there. But we feel very comfortable because school buildings are not like houses or other commercial buildings. And if you talk to most people that, that deal with school buildings, they'll tell you that the codes, the requirements on changing air out in the building, the HVAC and the mechanical systems, as an engineer, you understand.
Right.
Is much different than it is even at a college. A K-12 structure is totally different in all aspects because of the, the, the students that you're housing. So we look at that very tight all the time. We've been doing projects, albeit a little bit smaller. The mechanical project at West Iredale High School is a good example, mechanicals. Our estimate was 1.6, it came in at 1.493. So.
All right, so basically, y'all, you, you are relying upon your track record of being accurate as opposed to.
And best practices.
Some other aspect.
Yes.
Well, the DPI publishes from time to time, and they rotate according, what I've learned, they rotate according to zip codes. They randomly pick.
That's correct.
Different cities around the state, so that you're never more than about 50 miles over a two-year period from where they did the last estimate of what you could expect.
That's correct.
Square foot cost to be for construction. And they estimate, and they suggest that you put a 5% per year escalation between the times they do it.
Correct.
So you can, if you fall within that, then you may not be stealing the building, but you're probably not getting gouged.
Right.
Oh, tough one. Charter schools don't come to us and ask us to pass bonds to build and renovate their buildings. Why do you?
Well, I would say again, that's the, the way that North Carolina has chosen to structure the charter school application in our, in our state. Charter schools do have a great deal of flexibility that we do not have. Charter schools are not required to have athletic programs, they're not required to participate in the child nutrition program, they're not required to, to run buses, a transportation system. So money that they save in those areas, they're able to use that money with no strings attached. However, their board of directors choose to, to use those funds. Also, for the first time in the history of charter schools, at least in Iredale County, we have a for-profit charter school operating here, and it is traded on the stock exchange. You can become an investor in that. So it is a profit motive behind the operation of the school. We are at the mercy of the taxpayers and the county commissioners when it comes to building, buildings. And that is a constitutionally guaranteed right of our, of our parents and our children, and it's a legal obligation that county commissioners have. I don't know if that's the answer that you're looking for, but it's, it's your responsibility to build school buildings for public schools.
Like I said, a lot, you know, a lot of these questions are questions that, that we're getting, and I'm just, we're just putting it on the record, let, let me answer it. On, in some of your program of work here, you've got HVAC upgrades.
That was never in our package. I don't know where that came from. It was never in these five projects.
Cool Springs, HVAC upgrades.
Well, Cool Springs is a total renovation upgrade, but not, South Iredale and North Iredale are not, except for when you raise it, you gotta replace it, if that's what you're referring to.
Okay, all right. So you'd say the same thing with the roof renovations as well?
Right. We've been, we've been addressing those with annual recurring capital, lottery.
Okay. All right, good enough. Hold on a second. How old is Cool Springs, the building?
I.
All right, what year?
Cool Springs has two iterations. The oldest portions of the building were built pre-40s, around the 30s, 40s. The latter section of the building, the newest section, was built in probably, and I'm gonna be close here, but I don't have it right in front of me, but in the late 80s, early 90s.
And, and all that'll remain intact, correct?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Interesting question. Somebody said, I keep hearing that we promised Cool Springs and Mooresville Senior High School renovations that were left off the previous bond. So why do we have to, to spend money on promises that we couldn't keep on previous bond packages?
I think I addressed that in the, the way the phases were originally. It was phase one was bond, GO bond, and COPS. Phase two was COPS. Phase three was never funded. We did, there were two part, projects, Union Grove and Cool Springs. Union Grove we were able to do because we paid off another debt service. Cool Springs was the one that was left that was never funded.
But it's a legitimate project.
Sure.
All right, cool. All right, this is a good one, and I, I got this email yesterday. Does any of this money go to hire more staff in your central office?
No, sir, it does not.
Of course. If you fired half the staff in your central office, could we eliminate the need for the bond?
No, sir.
You actually could get rid of all of us, and you still couldn't pay the bond.
We all agree that the economy's in pretty, pretty difficult shape. And, and if you look historically, we've done either a COPS or a GO about every three years. It's been six years since we've done this one, but the economy is still sluggish. Why, why can't we just wait another, you know, I mean, we asked you, we asked you to wait, okay? We did. So can we ask you to wait another four years?
You certainly can. I don't think that would be wise, though.
All right.
I think that construction costs are continuing to go up daily now. I live on the Cool Springs project alone. When we first started looking at that about six years ago, the estimated cost on that was a million dollars less than it is today. So while we've been waiting, the cost of that one project has gone up about a million dollars. I would also say that in some of these cases, while they're not dangerous to students or anything like that, there, there are situations that we have that put us in positions of vulnerability. For example, at Cool Springs Elementary School, that is an open campus out there. You, anybody, any member of the public can walk on that campus, and we have classroom doors that just open to the, to the great outdoors. We have kids out in mobile units that are with flimsy locks that are very easily breached if somebody wants in those classrooms. Also, in a lot of these situations where we are purchasing and putting up mobile units, those are temporary fixes to long-term problems. And those mobile units, while they do provide an adequate classroom for a short season, those things depreciate very, very quickly. And they're not as efficient as a, as a brick and mortar classroom would be. We also have to keep in mind, too, that as we move forward with a lot of these projects, like the North Iredale and South Iredale High School projects. Dr. Miller mentioned earlier the covered walkways, and those things are made out of concrete. And you can go to any one of those campuses today, and, you know, those things were built in 1966. They are literally crumbling. And on any given day, I don't know what could happen with those things, but it certainly is something that we need to be aware of, and we need to start putting a plan in place to address. I do think that as a school system, we have been extremely patient, and these have been very challenging economic times. But I think the time now is to, is to get serious about these. If, if this, if this resolution is, is approved tonight and it makes it to the ballot in November and gets approved there, and everything, all the stars align, we're still looking at two years before you see any of these improvements ready for children to move into. What's, what's it gonna look like two years from now? And what will building costs look like for two years? So I think it's really prudent now, if we have the capacity to do so, to start tackling some of these issues rather than postponing them again.
Last question. Again, this is, this is one that was asked, but I'm gonna do it just for the record. How much of this bond was needed to implement Common Core?
Yeah. Thank you for that question. That's a soft question. Absolutely not a penny.
Okay, so if they do away with Common Core, that doesn't change the bond?
Absolutely not.
Um, just, you mentioned that there was a facilities task force. How, how many months or years have y'all been meeting prior to making this recommendation?
The, well, the actual task force finished this work two years ago. Then approximately a year ago, we presented it to the commissioners. We also, we called the task force back together May 20th, somewhere, no, it was in May. We called the task force back together again and had another meeting to sort of fill out, you know, okay, where are we? Where are we going from, from this point forward? So as we move forward, and as we move into new phases, we'll call the task force back together to start reviewing and looking at where we, where we heading down the road.
And was this just the Iredale Statesville School System, or did this task force involve both school systems?
It involved Mooresville graded, Iredale Statesville Schools, and had represented them all. At the time, Dr. Brewer was not at Mitchell. Mitchell was not in the initial planning part, but they are included from this point forward in the planning.
And on our board, the members were Chairman Johnson, Vice Chairman Norman.
That's correct.
Are there any members of that?
Yes.
Task force that are here?
Would you please stand up, members of the task force? We have quite a few here. We have four.
All right, and, please, we see, and how many members were on that task force?
I believe with, with all the representation, it was 14 from all over the county. It represented north, south, east, west, Mooresville graded.
Thank you. Thank you.
Does the, I have a question. The current auditorium at North Iredale High School. Does it meet the capacity of half of the amount of students that are there?
No.
Well, how many students are at North Iredale?
Uh, they have approximately, let me, I've got it right here, just hang on a minute. Month and nine, North Iredale High School had 1,100.
And how many does the auditorium seat?
470.
It's close, okay.
Yeah.
I have a question for you.
Yes.
Had I been sitting here 14 years or so ago and asking you this question, when Lake Norman High School was built, I heard you mention that Department of Public Instruction recommended its auditorium to be about half the student population. I may be presumptive, but, but my question is for you, since you're in charge of the bricks and mortar for that, for this system. Had we been a little more proactive then, would it probably be a better use of taxpayer dollars to have made that footprint larger in the school and the auditorium, anticipating what happened after that? Because I think within a year of opening that school, we were in mobile units which would depreciate.
Correct.
Twice as fast as regular bricks and mortar. And my point being is sometimes I think it's a better efficient use of taxpayer dollars, maybe to be a little more proactive instead of reactive.
Correct.
I think you would agree with that.
Yeah, I, I agree. I was not involved in that particular planning. I came in in 2000.
Right.
I think, I think the project opened in 2001. But yes, I would agree that the first thing that you have to do is your board has to determine how large a school do you wanna have.
Sure.
Before you build another one.
Sure.
In that case, at that particular time, that school was supposed to open with 1,200. It was made for 1,200. The seating capacity of their auditorium is just over six.
Right.
So it was about, about right. However, you're correct. It opened at almost 1,200.
Right.
And within a year, it was over 1,300, 1,400. We had to bring in mobiles.
Today, it's about 1,800?
Today, it's close to 1,900. It's a little over.
Being, being a little proactive, had we been able to be in that situation?
Yes.
I'll still make the statement, I think you would agree, in your business, that had we been a little proactive and presumptive, maybe back then, we would have been, had better use of taxpayer dollars of, and especially right now, what we know in the south end of the county with growth. And the numbers you've given us today is about a potential of another high school in the south end of the county for Iredale Statesville Schools. That was the point I wanted to make. I appreciate you.
Yeah, yeah. I think, I think you're right. I think probably, once a board decides the size of that high school, how big, how big they want it to be, then you need to plan for that maximum capacity.
It's all a guesstimate, I guess, based on what you're trying to figure out. But my point being is, is sometimes being a little proactive can, in the long run, for a long-term capital project, save you more money in the long run for taxpayers. For example, I'll use the example of the jail in 94, I think. We could have spent a little over a million dollars more on the footprint of our jail to be able to go up later. And now that's gonna cost us approximately $20 million because we thought a little savings back in 94 would save us money today. But I, I think, for example, we're using today, it was not, could have been second-guess decision, that was my point.
Yeah, I think you're right.
I think sometimes we have to look down, look more long-term for our capital needs and our capital projects, because it may be more efficient for our taxpayer dollars down the road because of mobile units and expanding and going back and doing things two or three times compared to doing it right the first time.
Right. And I think there is a limit to that because there's economies of scale.
Sure, there is. There's always a limit, but I appreciate your honesty on that. Thank you.
I think it's important to point out, too, that in a situation like Lake Norman High School, that was built for 1,200 students and now is at 1,900, we could certainly go in and add classrooms economically through mobile units.
Right.
But that does not fix the problem of an auditorium or a gymnasium.
In a gym.
Or a lunchroom, or gang restrooms, or hallways. You know, when you get a school that far over capacity, it changes the culture and climate of that building.
Right.
And so we kinda refer to that as being a penny wise and a pound foolish sometime.
Right.
But it is prudent sometime to expand the footprint of a school with the future in mind. And I wish we had done that at Lake Norman High School.
That's what I wanted, the voters here and the voters listening to us tonight on camera, is to understand sometime for a long-range capital project, it's a vision and it's a, it's the best intentions. And sometimes being a little more proactive can, in the long run, save us money.
Right, yeah.
You're building that school for 50 years in the future.
Right, okay, thank you.
Well, you know, it's, it's difficult to believe, we sit here and say these things in the context that in 1996 or 2006, there was no such thing as unlimited resources. Well, I was here, believe me, there was such a thing as unlimited resources. And you, and I agree with what Brady Johnson says. It is the core facility of, of any building that, that once it becomes stressed, then there's little you can do to remedy that. That's, that's the problem we're having at the jail. The core facility of the jail is stressed. You, you could add on cells to the jail, but they're still preparing 850 meals a day for, for a jailmate population, or cellmate population that was a fraction of that. And that's what you run into the schools. And then when, and back in 96, when we voted to build Lake Norman High School, you know, that was the recommendation of the school board out of recognition that there were limited resources. And there's research I, I have done, I don't know if Rob Jackson's here tonight, but I probably owe an apology because I've questioned a lot of what he says, but if you do some research, there is, there is some logic behind limiting the size of schools. Because some of the ancillary associated operational costs over time really eat your lunch if you're not real careful on these things.
There is a, an upper limit.
Yep.
That you, you would not like to go over because operationally, it costs you so much.
I agree with that, but the point being is sometimes being proactive is cheaper than being reactive. And all the Chairman Johnson's points are, are well-taken and accurate. I, I don't disagree with that. My point being is sometimes in a long-range capital project, a little more future planning sometimes, and I'm not criticizing what they did back then. It's easy to say what we should have done, but we weren't there then, you know, because we're looking after taxpayer dollars. we're looking after taxpayer dollars. So all I'm saying is for long-range capital projects, I think being a little proactive sometimes can, in the long run, be beneficial to the taxpayers.
And that's what we're attempting to do with a lot of what we're doing.
Absolutely. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Any other questions, these folks? Okay, who's up next? Mooresville, Mooresville folks, you'd come forward.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Mr. Smith, it's always a pleasure to come before you, representing the boys and girls in the Mooresville Graded School District. You know us, you've known us for a long time. You know our tradition of good management, good stewardship, and student success. Our plan is to continue that into the future for a long time. We appreciate your help with our endeavors up to now, and we ask for your support with our endeavors moving forward. At this point, I'd like to introduce our superintendent to provide some additional information on what we're asking for. Dr. Edwards?
Thank you, Mr. Hyatt. I'd also like to recognize, we have four of our board members here this evening, and ask our other board members if they would stand just a moment, like to recognize them. Glad that you're here. And also, we have Mac Herring, who's with the Mooresville City Council also here, Fair Pro Tem. Mac, thank you for being here. And again, we, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and also, Mr. Smith, we appreciate this opportunity to share with you our recommendation and our plan. You have received copies of it. The first recommendation is, we have two major projects related to this request for a GO bond. The first is for Mooresville High School. That is a big project. It is a $40 million project, but that project includes a lot of moving pieces. It's a significant project that, if we open, if we are able to start that, if this board approves this, it goes to the bond, it would take us, as Mr. Johnson and others have mentioned, it would take us two years before we could actually see some of the fruition of that project. As we have said before, to the Facility Studies Committee, we have shared with this board, we have two urgent matters at Mooresville High School that are safety issues. Now, I'm very appreciative that Mr. Robertson and Mr. Norman and Mr. Smith have all been down to see that in person, be able to see it close up and see the deterioration at the auditorium and the deterioration at the gymnasium. Mooresville High School was, is actually a configuration of three different, or three or four different building structures, but those are two of the oldest, and they were built when the school housed 600 to 800 students. We anticipate by 2017, 18, our enrollment at Mooresville High School being between 2,200 and 2,400. And that's based upon both state projections, our projections, projections for next year. And we anticipate that that growth, we're seeing growth at every single school, at every single grade level, and all, and throughout the Mooresville Graded School System, and see a lot of developments that are, have been approved, they're in the pipeline, or that are pending. And in fact, just right around East Mooresville Intermediate School, there are two different developments that would result in several hundred new homes. And we know from the developments that have occurred recently, most of those homes have children. In fact, about 2.3 children per household, and they're coming into the school system. And most would tell you that they're moving for the school system. The other project is for a new middle school. This is in 2017, 18 is when that project would begin. It would be a two-year project. We would anticipate the enrollment at Mooresville Middle School at that time being 1,400, 1,200 to 1,400 students. I was, it was, I was listening carefully to Mr. Johnson, Dr. Cash, and see the, and also looked at the size of the middle schools in Iredelle Statesville and see that we are growing. And it's just a fact that all of the classes coming up, starting with this year's eighth grade, are 500 or more. And when you push them up quickly, you see the high school reaching 2,000. Then you go down, you get to 600 per class, and we see the numbers coming. And the reputation of the system is attracting incoming, and we are growing. And in fact, we are projected for significant growth this year by DPI. As we mentioned earlier, those are usually low estimates. The high school project includes several major parts, and I'll go through that. First, a new auditorium and a new gymnasium. Now, it's interesting, when I, as I was listening, there is only one auditorium in Mooresville. It's the Mooresville High School Auditorium. We don't have multiple, we only have one. And that auditorium doesn't just serve Mooresville High School. It does serve all of our schools. All of our schools have had activities. We have musicals. In addition to the high school musicals, we have elementary musical programs, we have middle school musical programs. We do not have an auditorium at our middle school. So we only have one auditorium. And as all of you well know, Mooresville is a community that takes great pride in its schools and the work that we do, and that's the reason that we have a significant number of members from our parent advisory and PTOs. The projected cost of that auditorium is 9.6 million. It does have a large capacity, 1,800, but I would share with you in advance that that is for programming capacity. We too called DPI and asked them about what they would recommend, and they said 50% or so, but they also said, if you have, it is a one auditorium community, then obviously you would want to build in conjunction with meeting the needs that that auditorium is used for, including as we move up to 2,400 students projected in the future. We also, in terms of the current gymnasium, the capacity, the cost of that is 8.8 million. Our gymnasium was built, again, when the school was about 600 to 800. And when you moved, when you know that if you look, as Mr. Haupt said, not way off into the future, but in the fairly near future, and you see well over 2,000 students, I would also say that that is used for a lot of programming. Both the gymnasium and auditorium are used for classroom programming. We're adding additional classes. We do have an exceptional fine arts program. We do have 220 members in our band for this coming fall. And I would anticipate when we reach 24, we'll have 300 or 400 members in that band. We're very proud of it. It's an award-winning band. Mr. Robertson, Mr. Norman, Renee, Ms. Griffiths, you have heard that band, or just a small part of it, but it will fill you with spirit, particularly in our auditorium. And I will also share with you that, in addition to that, we have a choral program with over 120 members as of today. We have an ROTC program that is one of the largest in the nation, and we're very proud of it. And believe it or not, they use that gym floor for their exercises. And I believe, Mr. Robertson, you were able to come to our Drill and Order review that we had last year and see the significance, but I'll have to tell you that we have to change our model because we don't have enough space in our current gymnasium to house our ROTC program. In addition to that, we also have a growing and emerging drama program that we're very proud of. And we believe that we do, as Mr. Johnson said, we need a holistic approach to educational programming and to meet the needs of many, many students. We have excellent athletic programs, excellent fine arts, and excellent academic programs. Those are two of the single biggest components, but also, it includes some cosmetic upgrades. And I want us, before there's any excitement about cosmetology or cosmetics, we're actually talking about painting all the classrooms, and that's a significant cost. We're talking about replacing the ceiling grids, replacing the ceiling tiles. We've offered a lot of detail on this. Replacing not all the damaged floors, but most of the damaged floors. And we do know that we're going to have to have asbestos abatement in the process. We've had engineers come in. And by the way, we have had two sets of engineers, and a seismologist, seismology engineer, look at the gymnasium and the auditorium, and both say, we highly recommend that you replace these as soon as possible. That's their, they did not condemn them, but both said it would not take a lot. And again, you see it with your own eyes. And I'll have to tell you, if you see it with your own eyes and see that there, we are in serious need of replacement. This also, the high school project would also include replacing the plumbing, the mechanical, and the engineering systems. Those are significant, but absolutely needed. And I'll have to tell you, we heard a heartfelt plea from one of the Facility Studies Committee members, who was actually appointed to represent Iredelle Statesville at our last meeting, but she had happened to serve as a senior project judge at Mooresville High School, and felt compelled, and I greatly appreciate it, to stand and say, something has to be done. And she has been an active member on the Facility Studies Committee, and she said she saw it firsthand and saw that, both from the restroom, and that's one of the other things that we want to do, is to do a, make a redo of the restrooms, all plumbing, to upgrade existing bathrooms, to upgrade electrical throughout, and to remove and replace the HVAC, including the ductwork. Again, it's a significant project, and I know that some of the questions will, for that amount, could we not build a new school? If you look at programming estimated cost for a school of 2,400 or 2,200, the most recent school built in North Carolina for that configuration was 68 million. It was in Wake County. We did look at all the most recent high school construction that occurred in the state. We looked at other states as well. We did a comparative pricing, so we looked carefully in terms of some of the provisions. And again, just as Iredelle Statesville has an outstanding track record, we do as well with our projects coming in on time and within budget. And with the last bond, all of those projects finished on time, within budget, and we're very proud of those facilities. And I would also say that we take extreme care of those facilities and take great pride in it. Those are the two major projects. The middle school project, again, would not, would not be completed into 2020, but we do project our enrollment at the middle school and the high school to continue to increase. And we believe that both from a programmatic standpoint, a functional utilization standpoint, and most importantly, in the immediate, a safety standpoint, that it is essential that we move forward. I do have notes from our first Facility Studies Committee with me this evening, which occurred in 2011. That was when the work completed. It was completed in 2012, but the work started in 2011. And I believe that, as was said earlier by Mr. Johnson, Dr. Cash, and Mr. Hyatt, that we have been good stewards of the public trust. We understand this is the public dollar, that we understand that. We understand that the asset is going to the public and saying that we need your help to serve our children. And I'm a firm believer, I've lived in Iredelle County for eight years, so I haven't been here all that long, but I'm a firm believer that this community supports its children, believes in its children, and believes in public education, and wants to support. I will add a note about the charters, because I have served on the State Board of Education for the last year. I've already told Mr. Johnson, congratulations, I'm glad that he will be, he will be serving on that state board this year. And I welcome the trade-off. Here you go, Brady. It's going to be a ton of fun. But I will have to tell you, I have, Ben Matthews in charge of facilities, I see every single month and have been talking to him. He is the man in charge of all facilities, as well as his assistant, and have had a chance to ask a lot of questions. I would add this note. This year, several charters did close. This is, you know, when we talk about the possibility, charters did close for not meeting the responsibilities both to their students and to taxpayers. They were closed. I don't know if you saw recently, but for the new charters that are being proposed, a significant percent, they're saying at this point, are not ready to open. In Charlotte, a charter did close. I talked to the superintendent there, and he said, one day, all of a sudden, several hundred students showed up and said, here we are. And so that is a very real possibility. But I also mentioned this, in terms of that facility availability, they do not have to comply with state standards that we have to comply with in terms of their facilities. Their facilities are, they can, they do not have to meet the same standards from DPI, so that is a significant difference. I would also just share this, that six years ago, Mr. Robertson and Sarah Hair Tice and Mr. Norman and I were at an event in Mooresville. We were talking about a second high school. And at that time, we were convinced we would need a second high school. I can remember specifically, Mr. Robertson saying, this gives me the biggest headache I have had in a long time because we need a lot of new facilities. And at that point, we were looking at that, but during that process, we made a programmatic change to use the old middle school, what we call the Magnolia Annex, as a double footprint for our high school. And with that, it gave us the opportunity to move away from the idea that we would need a second high school. Now granted, this is, Mooresville High School will be a large high school, 2,200 to 2,400 students down the road. It will be large, but we are on two campuses. Now, part of this plan does call for us to move the programming at NF Woods over to the Magnolia campus, which will bring great efficiencies. We, today, we transport children by bus to NF Woods several times a day and incur a cost in terms of fuel, transportation, buses, but lost instructional time. And even though we'll gain, we estimate, of saving about $100,000 a year, roughly, from the operational cost, but what we will save, that is much more, is the instructional time that we lose about an hour a day in that transfer from students moving to and from the school. A couple of other notes that I would make is that, I know a question came up, well, why do we take care of our facilities? We've spent over a half a million, I'm embarrassed to say this, but it's just a fact, we have spent over a half a million dollars on the auditorium in the last 10 years. 124,000 on one roofing project. And when we had the project done, the roofer said, this has been patched a lot of times. You could, it's, it's got so many Band-Aids on the top, it could be a Band-Aid commercial. And they literally said, you know, this is, this roof, it had a membrane roof, they went back over and put another roof, they tried, but we have spent a lot of money patching that facility together. And so we have, we take great pride in our facilities, taking care of them. We just honored our maintenance and custodial teams last week, and I truly believe that they're champions and do great work, but this is essential. I would mention this. At this point, since we do not anticipate coming and recommending another high school, if we had another high school, obviously, it would not be a 2,200 people, it'd probably be a 1,200 people. But even at that cost, a 1,200 people high school, estimated cost would be between 40 and 50 million. At one point, we also talked about doing a major renovation at NF Woods. It's on the 2012 Facility Studies Plan, and we had a combination of Woods, Mooresville High School, 30 million and 20 million, total of 50 million in 2012. Today, what we're proposing is, which will result in a $50 million savings, cost efficiency savings, with not needing a second high school, and a $10 million savings on the combined project of NF Woods and the, NF Woods coming together with the high school, another 10 million, so the equivalent of $60 million down the road. And I do believe that Iredelle Statesville will need a new high school, and I do believe that we're going to see growth pick up. We're seeing all, particularly in South County, tremendous signs of this. So I think it is prudent to understand that down the road, Iredelle Statesville will have needs. But from a high school standpoint, I would fully anticipate that this will serve our students for years and decades to come and serve them well. And we want to provide a facility that we can be proud of 10 years, 20 years, and 30 years, and that will be sound and secure. So we feel confident that this is something that the public will support and that they believe in. And I know our community, our Chamber of Commerce, Economic Development, all have seen the benefit of a strong school system, resulting in positive signs of economic development and prospering for our students. I would also mention, because I think this all fits into this package, is that over the last six years, the Mooresville community has seen 3.5 million in education tourism. Now, those numbers are, we can give you the detail on that, and that's directly from the Economic Development Tourism Board giving us the projected cost when we have visitors coming in to spend the night, 3.5 million for our annual conference and other visitations. And our students, in the last six years, since we started our digital conversion, have received 15.5 million in scholarships, a 300% increase in annum over the last five years. And this is something else. We hear talk about jail and the need for facilities, which I certainly believe that's part of the public, part of the public work that has to be done. But our graduation rate last year was 93.4%. It was second in the state of North Carolina, and according to last year's DPI report, we ranked 105th in funding, but second in the state of North Carolina graduation rate at 93.4. Our African-American students ranked 98% number one in the state, and our students from poverty ranked 91% number three in the state. And if you talk to our police chief, he will tell you that with our graduation going up, his business goes down. So he said, I don't want more business. Keep the graduation up, keep the business down. There's a direct correlation between quality of life, crime, safety, with the quality of an education, of a school system. So I think that when we look at the infrastructure, the infrastructure for this county, this is the type of programming that makes sense today, it'll make sense in the future, and we'd be glad to respond to any questions.
I've got a couple. I did some research over the weekend. I guess I lead a pretty dull life. I spent Saturday night working on some of this. They recommend that an auditorium be anywhere from 1/3 to 1/2. They recommend that an auditorium be anywhere from 1/3 to 1/2 the average daily membership. And then they have a formula that you go by. If you do it, you'll arrive at pretty much the same figure. They recommend eight square feet per student, and then they have a list of recommendations of square footage for the various functions needed to serve that auditorium. You've got, I didn't bring that with me, the justification that Mr. Smith asked for, but it was something north of 45,000 square feet for the auditorium project. If, I based it on your current student population, and I took the high range of all the recommendations they made and included areas for dance, music, vocal and instrumental, and theater, and I couldn't get to 30,000 square feet. Yet you're asking for 45,000 square feet. Now, as we were talking, we said, taking Mr. Hoult's advice and being proactive, a 2,400 student high school. And then I bumped up each one of these accordingly from the high range. I still barely make 30,000 square feet for an auditorium that the DPI and the State Board of Education would recommend for an auditorium for 2,400 students. So I'm still 15,000 square feet short of what you're asking for. Now, you said that it was gonna be the only auditorium in Mooresville, and I believe that statement. But I read directly from the recommendations of the state school board and the DPI, and they say that large joint school slash community use auditoriums are discouraged. Large auditoriums are much more costly per square foot due to increased volume, structural spans, and special building code requirements. It is generally believed that multiple performances to smaller groups are more successful than single performance to a large group. Now, I asked a civil engineer friend of mine to translate that, and he began to talk in root spans that they allude to here, but he says, when you get that load factor, then you become into another class of construction where the walls have to be much stronger and the footing of the building has to be much stronger. And if, generally speaking, in an auditorium, once you get much over a thousand-seat auditorium, that the per-square-foot cost begins to rise dramatically, which is probably the reason that we're at $212 a square foot for this building. Why do you need, justify the difference between what the DPI says is adequate and what you're asking for, 45,000 square feet? And bear in mind that when McCray Auditorium was built, they made it larger because the city was gonna use it, but the city put in money. If Mooresville's gonna use it, I mean, I gotta meet with them on Economic Development Thursday morning. They don't mind asking me for money, so I'm gonna return the favor and ask them for them. If they're gonna use it, are they ready to write us a check tonight? Or we gotta, we gotta fund an auditorium that'll supply the functions of the city as well? And is that equitable for the county to do that through the school funding?
I'll be glad to respond, Mr. Johnson. First of all, what I would use as a comparative analysis, two projects have just been presented to you, both from Iredale Statesville. Both that came in with very little appreciable cost difference between auditorium at Mooresville High School. As a matter of fact, you had proposals for two auditoriums that were at 9 million. The Mooresville High School auditorium is 9.6. Mooresville High School will be serving 2,200 to 2,400 students. Both those schools will be serving roughly 1,000 to 1,200 students, or somewhere in that range. I have their enrollment, daily enrollment as of today. So you're seeing that ultimately, your question is, you know, why would our cost be this? Well, ultimately, we're saying our costs are of no appreciable difference than the two projects that were just presented to you. In fact, when you look at the number of students to be served, the project at Mooresville, now I would also add, the reason that we have made this recommendation is based upon programmatic needs. In addition to this auditorium, the way we are designing it, we will be able to use sections of that auditorium for classroom space. And we actually, when I was superintendent in Arico County, I served there for 10 years in Richmond, Virginia, '94 to 2004, we built a high school, deep-run high school, with an auditorium that was smaller than Mooresville's population, but did have a capacity of 1,800. And in that facility, we were able to section it off and use it for classrooms, and it was particularly valuable space. Our class sizes now at Mooresville are up to 32 per class, and this is programming space that includes a variety of fine arts programming. And we believe that this is what we need, and we stand by it, and we believe in it, and we have had, our board has reviewed it. Our board asked very clear questions and said, tell us about this facility, why do we need it, the programming space? And we believe that this facility will meet our needs. And we would not recommend that we come in and build a facility that a few years from now, they would say, why in the world didn't you anticipate some growth in this school, anticipate the needs? And when you have a band program of 220 today, and then you move forward, or 120, we have 600 and some odd kids involved in direct programming related to that facility, they use in terms of classroom space every day. So it's not just an auditorium. Now, in addition to that, we have been, we have been in dialogue with the town of Mooresville. One of the things that we cut out of this project, that anybody that's in Mooresville knows that is a huge issue for us, is that parking, parking space that we had hoped to include in this. We cut it out. I have personally, in the last two weeks, met with every single town commissioner, including Mayor Proton Herring, who is here, and I have already been talking about it with significant detail about their support. I will also tell you that some of the other things that were not included in this, we would love to have a crosswalk between, walking between Mooresville High School over to the Magnolia Annex. We looked at the price of that, we took it out of the project. There are several other things that we would like to have in this project. So we, and I will tell you, we don't intend just to ask the town of Mooresville, there are other enterprises that we want to go to, to say we need additional support.
But you understand, tonight, we're being asked to put on the ballot $40 million. Not $40 million, and maybe somebody will come up with something, $40 million. And that's what's gonna be on this bond. If we, if we vote for this tonight, that's what's gonna be on this bond. Now, if somebody later, either goodness or their heart chooses to write a check, then I guess we can put that in the bank and pay this thing off. But there's not gonna be much incentive for them to do that if we've already gone to the taxpayers and asked them for $40 million. Now, to back up a little bit, I don't know that a comparison between those two orderments, and, you know, I feel like I'm refereeing between my two little nephews here a little bit, but...
Mr. Johnson, I'll have to tell you, Brady Johnson and I have talked almost every single day for two weeks. We are completely together. You're not refereeing between us.
I'm glad y'all getting along, but there's 2.2 million in here for site preparation. And then the total between the renovation and the gym and auditorium, there's 6.7 million for project allowance. Now, you know, we asked you to firm these numbers up, and I'm looking at a number here of 6.7 project allowance, and then there's a menu of items at the bottom of the page that I guess I'm to choose from as to what would be in that 6.7. But earlier, I asked the county manager, did he realize what would happen to him if he came here, in here with a jail ordinance and he had a 20% contingency or project allowance in there? He, if it's left up to me, he wouldn't have a very pleasant day. I don't think I'm a difficult person, I'm just trying to be a good steward here. But that's, to me, that's unheard of, and 30-something years of business and 20 years of being a county commissioner, I've never heard of such. What am I to make of that?
Well, those recommendations, the project allowances, which include the site survey, the architectural and engineering, the asbestos abatement alone in the auditorium, the gymnasium in the school, is going to be significant. The kitchen equipment, including loose furniture, that's the project allowance for 20%, and that is the standard recommendation from the American Education Architectural Design. It's also a standard recommendation related to projects where you have significant demolition. We know that when we do the demolition at the auditorium, all of the ground around that auditorium is soft. I pointed out to both Mr. Robertson, Mr. Norman, Mr. Smith, General Mallory, others, Mr. Hoult came down to talk about it and showed visible evidence, and we know that there's gonna be significant cost related to that. And we have been forewarned by multiple individuals that this is all that they do. And I would also share that this is my 20th year as a superintendent, involved with three different bond referendums. If this goes on the ballot with multiple schools, and I would say that we stand by our track record, our work, the reliability of the information that we give, the standard recommendations that are provided. And I went back, and just as you've asked, I went back and said, I want to make sure I have the detail on this, and that the project allowance also concludes a 5% contingency. And I would also say this, if you talk to architectural engineers, and I did talk to Mr. Robertson about this, if you do not provide the funding to make sure that you can get the work done, then you cannot finish a project. And I would hate to say, you know, we didn't plan ahead and we knew that we had, we were told this is, there's major asbestos abatement. Now, I would also share this. Last week, we had our senior awards assembly, and we had parents out, and the auditorium was full of people. We had a big rainstorm, and as the, as the, as the program finished, parents were walking up and they were in the foyer. A big section of roof fell to the ground, and we had to call in a hazmat crew because the asbestos dust, the debris that fell, and if somebody had been sitting there, or somebody had been hit with that, or if they had been there and exposed to that asbestos. And I do believe it was a message from God, saying, this is a providential message, take care of business. And I would say this, we have reviewed this carefully, we have made a recommendation that we believe is on target, is clear. I've had the pleasure of being a superintendent where we have built 20-some-odd schools. Over the track record of that, I can show evidence that the schools came in on time and within budget, and not one project came in with any type of significant overage after the project, including Rocky River, Mooresville Intermediate School, the renovation of, and the movement of Mooresville Middle School. So we've had a strong track record. Mr. Johnson, many times you said that you have great faith in Ms. Hass, our finance officer. She has reviewed these carefully with us. We've gone through it many, many times, and we believe that they're solid and sound recommendations, and recommendations that will meet the needs of our students, of our community. And I would also say this, we spoke to a representative of DPI yesterday about the recommendations, and he said, we do recommend 50% of your population. And he said, however, and I'll quote him verbatim, in a community where you have one auditorium in the community and it's used by many, many groups, I can promise you, we have dance recitals, that if that auditorium had 2,400 seats, we would be able to fill it up. We, this is a community high school, we're proud of that, and we're saying that there's probably a $60 million savings in moving from one high school and moving away from having to do the renovation at Woods. And we stand by that recommendation and believe that it is a sound recommendation. We have presented this report three, two years ago, started it three years ago, and two years ago, had a report that had comparable costs in here. And through those multiple meetings, in fact, higher cost than this, because it was 50 million back in 2012. There was no cost, there was no question. Now, we have given explicit detail, and we believe that this is a sound recommendation, and we stand by that recommendation.
Well, I just differ that 60, that a 20% project allowance is specific detail. I've never heard of that. I do believe that you, quite frankly, you're building a larger auditorium than is necessary for the operation of the school. And if that is the case, this project is one of the things, and I'm not, this project has driven the whole discussion up to this point, as to whether we should even have a bond at all. The Iredale State, no, the Iredale Statesville folks, all we've heard from them is current expense. And they, school board members have said to me privately, that if we're gonna put a bond on the ballot, then they're gonna bring their projects forward, but they were more concerned about current expense. So this project is the one that has driven the discussion. And typically, what we have done is funded things on an ADM basis. Now, I realize, and I am sympathetic to the need at the high school, but in order to minimize the inequity in the school bond, we have to make sure that this project is reasonable in its cost. Because if it's not, it skews all the rest of the cost and exacerbates the issue of inequity. And that's all I'm trying to drive it. I mean, I think you got 22% of the kids and you're getting 45% of the money. Well, if we could back this project down to where it is more reasonable in regard to equity, then I think we could either move some of that money to Iredale Statesville, reduce the amount of indebtedness that the taxpayer would curse, preserve that political capital for the next time we have to do this. But...
Maybe this will help, Mr. Johnson. The Statesville High School project, 2006, 33.6 million, consumer price adjustment for inflation, 39.2 million today.
They basically rebuilt that high school except for the south end of it.
I understand. What I'm saying is, that school, with the capacity at 1,200, 1,400, compared to a school with a capacity of 2,400, same price today, 39.6 million. We're saying 40 million. Very comparable cost, much larger footprint, much larger frame, much larger student service at Mooresville High School, comparable cost. Three auditoriums proposed tonight, within $600,000. I would say that that's pretty reasonable. If we're asking for an auditorium that is in line with the same other two auditorium projects, quite frankly, I understand, and I think those projects are certainly warranted. I don't, I'm not gonna get into Iredale Statesville business, I wouldn't do that, but they've come forward and said, that's what we need. We're coming forward and we're saying, that's what we need to meet the needs of our students.
Okay. We're just gonna disagree on that.
One question I have, or a statement, I guess you'd say. In light of what we talked about with Iredale Statesville, as far as Lake Norman High School, we were almost at capacity within a year, I believe, of construction. Doing our due diligence, and in my opinion, I understand what Chairman Johnson says, we all are concerned with that. For me, what I would ask, you know, the Lake Norman project was at capacity a year after construction. With the, with what happened at Lake Norman, showing the history in light of that, I think it would be remiss for us not to be a little more proactive in a project in the south end of the county, based on history. And I think we can see where Lake Norman High School and other projects, as Dr. Miller said, for the north and south, you've got the same problem with structural issues because of footing and things like that, asbestos. I'm in the restoration business, and I understand that, you know, remodeling and outfits and taking care of those type issues are a lot more expensive than what people realize. As a taxpayer and as a county commissioner, doing my due diligence for the taxpayers, the 40 million is a high end of the realm. I understand your project allowances. I understand where Chairman Johnson's coming. I think we all have the same concerns. I guess what I'm trying to say is, two years ago, you guys, all systems were promised, based on my understanding, talking to my predecessor that I'm sitting here tonight, because unfortunately, he's not here. He agreed with large projects going to the voters to be decided, okay? I understand he was one of the ones that promised that there would be a ballot referendum, or referendum on, bonds on the ballot in November 2014 for the voters to decide. or referendum on, bonds on the ballot in November 2014 for the voters to decide. I guess what I'm wanting, I'm telling you here, and I'm cautioning, I understand we're in tough economic times. From the last bond project, some of the projects were canceled because the economy took a downturn. As county commissioners, they will still be in that control in the future if that happened, okay? Because these are done in phases that can be stopped or slowed if the economy takes a downturn, right? So, I guess what I'm asking you is, both systems, and Mitchell and everybody, if the bonds are put on the ballot, and if the voters choose to vote for them, I'm asking you to do your due diligence when the bids come in to hold the cost down, only use the money you need to use. It's kind of like an equity line on a house from a layman's terms. You don't have to borrow it because you've got credit for it. So, I guess from my point of view is, you're here asking the voters to give you a credit line to do a long-term capital critical need project that you were promised two years ago that would be on the ballot in 2014. And in my opinion, the voters need to have a right to decide that. Even all the people that I've talked to that may not vote for this project and is against it, agree that it's the right thing to do to let the voters decide. We're here as checks and balances for the voters, in my opinion. So, I guess my point, I understand everybody's point of view. Chairman Johnson's been pretty accurate on economic issues in the past, as all my colleagues here have been. And you guys have a great track record, Iredale Stateful does, you know, for your funding levels. I appreciate as a parent and a citizen that you have done a lot. The John Locke Foundation said that the voters in this county are getting a bang for their buck. So, my point is being is, you're here asking us to trust you to put a bond referendum on a ballot for the voters of this county to decide. And all the concerns that everybody have expressed are real and valid. And I think for the promise you've had, the due diligence, I believe, in my opinion, it is a concern of the size of the project, but having in mind that that's the only high school in the auditorium and the gym you're going to ask for for the next 30 to 50 years. And with the history of the south end growth, using Lake Norman as an example, in my opinion, doing due diligence for the voters, I think that's probably a pretty fair assessment for the future. And we all may look back 10 or 15 years from now and say we're wrong, but I would a lot rather be able to look back in 15 years saying, we're glad we looked down the road if it passes, and you're not coming here, standing here before whatever boards here, saying, I need more money to expand an auditorium or a gymnasium. So, sometimes it does cost the taxpayers less in the long run, being proactive than reactive.
You've got a few questions. Do you want to continue?
No, I'm done.
Okay. You've heard all these questions before, but some of them I won't ask because they were very ISS specific. With respect to the question about, how many additional seats or additional student capacity does this give you? You said the middle school project would probably give you an additional 1,200 to 1,400 students. What about the work that's going to be done at Mooresville Senior High School and eliminating Woods? Are you going to gain seats? Are you going to lose seats? What's the effect of that?
Ultimately, by redesigning, and this has a lot to do with our CTE programming, we do have space at the Magnolia Annex that we will have to do work on, but we are going to gain functional program space, CTE programming. And it's in terms of, it's not a square box with 25 seats. So, we gain additional functionality, gain great cost efficiency, and believe that in terms of both instructional programming, specific CTE programming, this project's going to allow us to provide both the facilities that we need to deliver those programs, and then also get away from what we're doing now, which is running a bus system to meet our CTE programming needs.
But does this actually enable you to increase the number of students that the high school handles?
It does. We do project that we can, that, and we do believe that our footprint will max out at right around 2,400, but that we could serve up to 2,400 students in this facility.
Okay. So, this just helps you get to the 2,400?
Correct. Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Hold on, while I... I would assume that Mitchell's Mooresville campus, also you've got some of your seniors who are participating in that, and that's relieving some of your pressures to provide classroom seats for seniors. Do you know what sort of number that is?
I believe we did, I think we had 27 students this year that took courses, and it may have been a single course, or it may have been double courses, but a relatively small number. But we do have a very strong valuable partnership. And actually, Dr. Brewer and I met this week, talking about trying to expand that, and also trying to mesh some of our programming. We were particularly talking about CTE and how we could leverage some of the programming. In the past, we have shared some of our facilities with Mitchell, and they have shared their facilities with us. And even though that reference to, a reference to non-sharing facilities was made in a, I believe it was, that document was back from 96, 98, we'll tell you that the recommendation all over the country is, shared facilities result in cost efficiencies for communities. So, again, this, when we talk about auditorium in particular, we're talking about that, or the gymnasium, that those are shared facilities.
I know, and I'll let Dr. Brewer address it if he wants to, but I know at one time, Mitchell was thinking about an auditorium for Mooresville. If you get this auditorium, I would say that for us to provide him an auditorium would be redundant. Mitchell Community College would have access to your auditorium, yes?
We have, yes, and we have an excellent relationship with Dr. Brewer. The Mitchell staff have partnered in many, many ways. In fact, Dr. Brewer serves on our education foundation, and is dean of the Mitchell campus, also serves on the parent advisory board, Dean Fansler. So, we have a very strong partnership, and we also have a strong partnership with the town of Mooresville. And again, we have two huge issues related to Mooresville High School. One is parking. And anyone, and we have a larger parent here who will say amen and testify to that, and we do plan to go to the town and say, we need some additional help. We've had positive conversations, and this conversation's been going on for several months. It's not something that in the last two or three weeks. And even though they haven't said, this is an exact amount, we don't even have a bond referendum. And before you go and say, give me money, and you say, well, for what? So, part of it is, you know, getting our ducks in row before we can go there.
Okay. I'm going to ask you the question about STEM, science, technology, engineering, and math. You know, are we making a choice, are we foregoing and not spending the money on STEM so that we can build an auditorium? You know, STEM, we believe, are going to, the STEM studies are going to prepare the students so that they can go get good-paying jobs, so to speak. Whereas auditorium, you know, singing, dancing, acting, and all that, that's really not a big industry here. Are we sacrificing any investment in STEM in order to, in order to do this auditorium?
Yes, sir. One of our investments that we made several years ago that I think has really paid huge dividends, when we moved into our digital conversion and science, technology, and math, and putting them together, and providing our students with the online resources related to functionality with online content related to science. As a matter of fact, I'm pleased to tell you that we have our preliminary test data back from this year. Last year, we were third in the state at 57. Once the Common Core, new Common Core-like test came in, all the scores dropped. Now, we're, looks like we're going to be uncommon, uncommon core, or something else. We're not sure yet. Mr. Johnson will have to figure that out with the state board. However, one thing that I would mention, that we do have back our preliminary data, and our pass rate went up to 70 percent. And we're particularly pleased with our performance on the science. And I'll give you an example. Year before last, our pass rate for biology, for all students in Mooresville was 95 percent. And we have seen students, we just had a young man who received a huge scholarship to North Carolina State University in math and science combo. So, we do believe that we're doing a very, a strong job. We did in the 19, no, the 2002 edition at Mooresville High School, we did add a science laboratory space. But we use a lot of virtual labs, and actually, with the new content, that's where things are going. There's a lot of probability for students to be engaged more often and more labs. So, we use a lot of virtual labs, and have had a lot of success with that.
Okay. I'm going to throw the charter school question out at you. I mean, the charter schools don't ask us to borrow money, you do. It was interesting, you said that they don't have to build it to the same standard. So, really, if a charter school were to close, then we really might not have the option, even if they were willing to sell it. If we bought it, you still couldn't use it. Is that a correct statement?
Yes, sir. They do not have to meet the specification of standards related to DPI.
Are their standards higher to build charter school buildings, or their standards lower?
I don't know what their standards are, but I do know that a lot of the models are built so that they could be, at some point, transferred over to either office space or some other type of function space where they have clothes. But I do know that they don't have to meet the state standard.
The educational requirements, because it's an educational building, stem from the zoning and the regulations that are put out by the building department. What they're referring to is the added programming space that they have to have, that a charter school does not. The buildings are built to specific codes for educational purposes. So, that building could be used for another educational purpose. However, if you bring a public school in, the space requirements would not be there for the programs that they're required to house that the charter school is not. Does that make sense?
Yep.
I think you addressed, Chairman Johnson already asked all the questions I was going to ask about the auditorium. I am going to ask you about your gym. Why do you need a new gym? You didn't tell us why. You just said you want it bigger, you can have more students.
Yeah.
Okay, why don't we just build you a different gym and give you two gyms? Why don't you do that?
Well, our gym, and I know that you know this, Mr. Robertson, because you had the pleasure and privilege of going underneath that gym with Mr. Norman. I noticed you didn't want to stay there very long. And then, no, and in fact, I'll have to say that both you, Mr. Smith, and Mr. Norman all were ready to leave fairly quickly, and there was nobody in the gym.
That's true.
Because when you see one concrete beam, it would not meet code today, and that is the sole source of the foundation of that gym. And the gym, again, was built when the high school capacity was 600 to 800. And we would be building a gym for the capacity, again, in concert with what Mr. Haupt has said, to 2,200 to 2,400. We do have a wide range of physical education and health education programming that we would be, and that space includes additional classroom functional space in that. But it's just like the other projects that have been included, we're including, we do, we will see some additional functional capacity to meet the needs of students. But again, that has been a challenge for us, and it is a huge challenge. And it also has to do with other programming. I mentioned ROTC, but those are credit-bearing courses. And when we have one of the largest ROTC programs in the country continuing to grow, and we're very proud of it, that's part of the functional space that we need for that programming. So, we believe that it's a gym that will meet the needs. We believe that it is comparable in many ways to Lake Norman's gym. I know our students are in awe of that space when they see it and say, boy, we'd like to have. I shared at a previous meeting, my little boy said, boy, wouldn't it be great to have a gym like this someday? And I said, he's a rising ninth grader. I said, I hope someday we will. But the gym, we do believe that it's, again, from a cost comparison standpoint, and by the way, we did compare prices related to the auditorium and the gym with multiple projects around the state. And it's one reason that you mentioned earlier, Mr. Robertson, that our square footage costs seem to be in line. Well, we've looked at the same data, Iredale Stateful, and we have looked at the same data, the database from the state and other databases around to recent construction over the last five to six years.
Before I go to the next question, having a son who played for the Lake Norman football team, I do think we could probably cut out y'all's weight room for the football team and all that. Okay. You've got some money in for HVAC work. Why didn't you maintain, and again, these questions are questions that I've heard, been asked, emailed. Why didn't you maintain, and also, you've mentioned that the foundation of the auditorium is failing. Why are you using bond money to do maintenance that you should have maintained them all along? Why didn't you maintain them? And specifically, did you take money that you were supposed to use for maintenance and go buy laptops instead of maintaining your buildings? I'm going to give you an opportunity to publicly address that question because it is asked.
Sure. And we used our current expense to pay for our digital conversion. And basically, we took the resources, and I, you know, we didn't have, we had one small grant from Lowe's for infrastructure seven years ago, but we used our operating expense to pay for that. We basically took, carved out approximately $180 to $200 per student on a leased purchase basement. We stopped buying textbooks and went to digital resources and other things, and so we've been able to leverage that. And with that footprint, leveraging that, and not using, the only place that we would use any capital dollars would be with infrastructure, which was both permissible by both state standards, and in fact, encouraged. In fact, if you go back to DPI recommendations, they strongly recommend that every single, in fact, required that for future test assessment, the type of digital footprint that ISS and Mooresville both have now. So, there was a strong recommendation. And again, with that, we have seen that translate to higher achievement, higher graduation, more scholarships, and quite frankly, articles coming out saying that Mooresville is one of the best districts in the nation. And I will have to say this, I think it's pretty remarkable that the Mooresville Greatest School District had the New York Times and Fox News both doing major articles saying the same thing. And that doesn't happen real often, when the New York Times and Fox News say the same thing, and they both, Fox News sent a team in with Juan Williams, and the New York Times sent a team, and they both said the same thing. They said, there's a huge return. Earlier was mentioned, the John Locke Foundation said, this is a district that gets a return on investment. And so, that's, we use that current and operating expense.
But just yesterday, did you divert maintenance funds?
No, sir. No.
To pay for your laptops?
No.
Okay.
And by the way, let me also add this, Mr. Robertson. We have replaced a chiller at Mooresville High School, and we have spent a grand total of $667,000, just under three-quarters of a million dollars on Mooresville High School for preventive maintenance over the last several years. So, we invest every year, patching, repairing, putting things together, trying to figure out how to make a space work that we've outgrown.
Okay. I do have one alibi on the gymnasium question. You took, you took us to, underneath your gymnasium, which that's the first time I've been underneath a gymnasium floor, you showed us the floor joist or the beam, and said that during the Lake Norman, Mooresville basketball game, that an engineering firm came and measured the maximum deflection of that beam when the basketball game was going on. What was the deflection of the floor?
I believe it was seven inches. Mr. Black is here, six and a half, six and a half. Just over seven inches.
Just over seven inches.
Seven inches. And I'll have to tell you, when the, we had two different firms come in and measure it. And the first one came in, I will have to tell you, he, when he was there, he moved to the side of the wall real quick and said, we need to get out of here. And when, and if you've been, if you've been to a Lake Norman, no, there's several games, if you go to a game, now, we no longer, we put parameters on student behavior and limit the number of people that can come in, and done a lot of things that haven't helped us. But ultimately, when, before we put that in place, the, seeing the gym floor move up and down, the first time I was there and somebody pointed out to me, I was, then people were laughing about it, I became alarmed immediately. And I will have to tell you, I looked at the stands and I said, that floor could go. And it has been confirmed, we've had two different firms come in, and the seven-inch deflection, I think if you just stand there and see that, it is, it's quite alarming.
So, it's a safety issue?
Yes, sir.
Who won the game?
Well, that particular game, we had Sean Lester, and we beat Lake Norman pretty bad, but I didn't want to go there. That was a few years ago.
All right.
I'll have to tell you, in recent years, Lake Norman is, basketball's taken us to the woodshed. I will say that.
I'll own this question. When Stateful, when Stateful High School went to do their renovations, I asked the question because I thought it was a legitimate question, and I was all but drug into the street and killing... street and caned. But I'm gonna ask you the question as well, because if, if I'm gonna challenge Iredell Statesville, I'm gonna challenge Mooresville on the same thing. It costs a whole lot more to, to demolish, remove debris, and, and rebuild, or to renovate sometimes than it is just to walk away, go find a cow pasture and start anew. Why didn't you just say, "You know what, this, this building was built in, what, 1948, is it, or 50?"
Forty-eight was the earliest part, there's, again, several different parts.
Correct. Okay. So, I mean, this building is, you know, sixty-four years old or whatever, why don't you just walk away and, and stay in the district, but go out like you did for some of the other schools, just start over again?
Sure. Well, a couple of things. One, in terms of programming space, the fact that we plan to use the Magnolia Annex pretty secures that site. Second, Mooresville High School is an iconic structure and institution in Mooresville. It is revered, and the community believes that it is the heart of the community. It's the center of the community, it's the heart, and quite frankly, when we look at the cost, if we just said, "Okay, let's raise everything and start anew," first of all, we don't have programming space, we, we literally don't have a way to do that. And then, second of all, we projected, looked at a cost for a twenty-four-hundred people high school, and looked at two different cost configurations, one at sixty-four million and one at sixty-eight million. So I think a forty-million-dollar ticket on this would bode well with, uh, the voters and the taxpayers saying, "That's a much more cost-efficient model."
Okay. Does any of this bond money go to hire more staff in your central office?
No, sir.
If I cut your central office staff in half, would it help pay for this?
Well, that'd be three or four, that'd be four people, so, uh-
(laughing)
We've got nine, so it'd be four and a half.
Four and a half.
And if we're gonna fire everybody, we have to leave one person to fire the last person, then to fire themselves.
Okay. All right. The, the, when, when this board, me included, two years ago, said, "You know, we, we just need to wait, the economy is, is, is in a difficult spot, y'all wanted a bond, and we didn't, we didn't agree to put it on the ballot," and I'll own that, okay? The economy, I would say, is in significantly different shape than it was two years ago. Um, so why shouldn't we, what's the risk if we ask you, "Can we just, can we, can we push this thing another two, maybe four years off and, and do it then?" Why, why can't we push this thing down the road maybe four years?
I think there's two factors. One, safety. First and foremost, it's a safety issue. And I, I do believe that, uh, every day, and again, it will be two years before, if we, if this is passed and we're able to move, but I'll have to tell you, I think about often, if we have a small tremor earthquake, like we had about four years ago, I pray that there are no children in the auditorium. I pray that we do not have staff if that was to happen, because I believe that auditorium would go, go down, and we have had multiple. I know, Mr. Robertson, when you and Mr. Norman, Mr. Smith saw this and others, and see the back wall of that building bowing out, and you can see it, you don't even have to get out of your car in Magnolia, and you see it bowing out, and when I have, uh, folks come in to look at it, and I say, "Well, what do you recommend?" They said, "First of all, I wouldn't let any cars park here." I, I just, I wouldn't, or if I were you, I wouldn't park there. And he said, "And I'm not gonna park here." It was a beautiful, sunshiny day, so if we put this off, if it is put off, then ultimately, I think then the costs are gonna continue to go up, as we heard from Mr. Johnson. Quite frankly, the costs that we're seeing on, uh, all the projects are continuing to go up. And I would have to say this, if Davie County, they passed a bond in May, and if Davie County can pass a bond, Wake County passed the biggest bond they've ever passed, and if you look around the country, school bonds are passing everywhere. And I think it's the American public, and I think the North Carolina public's saying, "We support an investment in our children." I was talking to a minister about this, and I believe the Ministerial Association is going to really get fired up about this. I was talking to a minister about it, and he said, "You know what, I can't control much of what happens in Washington or in Raleigh, but in our hometown, it's time to go to work for our children." And he said, and I'll have to tell you, he said, "Dr. Edwards, this is God's work. This is standing up for children." And he quoted from Mark, uh, chapter seven, "Suffer the children unto me." And he said, "That's what I believe." And I think that's what our community believes, and I think it's time to suffer the children unto us.
Um, I forgot to ask Iredell Statesville this question, so you'll get it, and that is, I thought we got lottery money, and that was gonna build all of our schools. Um, what, what are you doing with your lottery money? Why aren't we using lottery money to, to pay for this?
Our lottery proceeds range from three-hundred thousand to three-fifty a year, and we use it to pay for debt service.
Okay, so it's already paying for, for other bonds that we've issued. Okay. All right. Any of this bond money go, were you planning to use it to, to pay for Common Core?
No, sir.
Lots of questions, very difficult. Um, thank you for showing me your gymnasium after I sat through the pass and review and not before. And, uh, and, and also, congratulations on all the, uh, all the incredible positive press and reputation that you've helped Iredell County earn by some of the incredible things going on at, uh, at Mooresville Greatest School District. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Chairman, I got one more.
Okay, let's try to wrap it up. Dr. Brewer's gonna be here for breakfast.
What my concern is, you know, on paper, to a lot of people north of Troutman, the equity issue is concerning. So I guess what I have to say is, in light of what happened at Lake Norman in the South Ingrowth, uh, if the bonds are put on the ballot, if they're passed, when Statesville High School was renovated, City of Statesville kicked in, I think, one-point-six million. If the bonds are put on the ballot, passed, and you go to Mooresville, if Mooresville's willing to kick in, I guess it's a, um, it may be a long shot, but I'm asking this from a trust-but-verify standpoint, as Ronald Reagan said. Um, if you get additional funding down the road, and I know the forty may be a high figure, if this, if these bonds are put on the ballot, passed, from an equity situation, on behalf of the citizens of the county, particularly north of Troutman, and I know Troutman South, sixty-eight percent of the property tax is paid Troutman South, and, and I know you're not throwing that up because, but it's a real fact, okay? So what my question is, if you get additional funding and can reduce the size of your borrowing, and that would be appreciated. And if Iredell Statesville gets a bond put on the ballot in years to come for an additional high school, I wanna ask that you and your staff and your supporters also support them, because right now, it appears it, from a, kinda inequitable, from twenty-two percent of the students, and that's a valid concern, I think Chairman Johnson jumped, uh, mentioned that. But in future bonds, and bonds in the, in the past, it was the other way around. So I want the citizens to consider that and look at this thing objectively. These are the, the most critical needs of both systems. Um, and I think, and, you know, we're, I believe the promises you gave, I hope that, that my fellow commissioners will vote as I will to let it go to the voters, and, but I'm gonna ask you, in both systems and Mitchell, if you can keep the projects down and don't have to borrow more than you have to, that's appreciated if everything passes. And I think from an equity standpoint, if Mooresville kicks in money, uh, hopefully you can reduce the cost to the whole taxpayers of Iredell County. Um, and that would be appreciated. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Anything else for these folks? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll now hear from Dr. Brewer from Mitchell Community College. Welcome, sir.
Thank you.
There's Dr. Bentley.
Thank you very much for the opportunity, and lateness of the hour, we, sorry about that. What we have a need that we want to present to you, that's been long-term planning to achieve this, we're in great need of a health science building that will house all of our science and health, uh, programs. The population, as I stand for you, can, can say is aging, and as the population ages, we're having a greater demand for trained health providers. So our board has looked at this for a long time, and our, we think the number-one need we have at Mitchell Community College is to have a health science building. And Dr. Brewer will give you the facts and figures and the planning that's gone into that.
Thank you, Dr. Bentley. Uh, let me start, uh, with a brief overview of how we've come to the, the decision that allied health building is what we truly need. We're asking for twelve million dollars. Early in two thousand and seven, uh, and late two thousand and eight, we were provided by our state legislators a sum of money to do advanced planning for future capital needs. Uh, at that point, there had been some discussion among our legislators to do a statewide bond referendum for public, uh, universities and community colleges, much like what happened in two thousand and one and two. We quickly listed as our number-one priority an allied health building. Many of you know, we have a, a very strong nursing program, and most of what this building is planned for is to accommodate the current needs of that allied health program, nursing, but also give us the opportunity to expand our offerings in allied health, and also provide the opportunity for us to put in one location all of our allied health programs. Currently, we have programs that we offer on our main campus here in Statesville, uh, we have our Front Street property where we are offering some allied health programs, and we also are offering allied health programs in Mooresville, and this will give us the opportunity to put that all in one place. Uh, the programs that we're looking at for the future that will require the space of this new building include CT and ultrasound, paramedic, right now, we offer a paramedic certificate program, but like to, would like to change that to a two-year program because that's what the national standards are, and we wanna maintain national standards. Physical therapy assistants would be allowed with the new program, new building, occupational therapy assistant, and respiratory therapy assistant. So the idea behind our need for this twelve-million-dollar building is to allow us to expand on what we're already offering, but also reach out in a new program, programmatic areas that will serve the allied health industry in Iredell County. As you all know, we are unique, we have three major hospitals, uh, that we, uh, service and provide services to. And I'll be glad to go into your questions or any other questions related specifically to the needs and the building.
We fired half your staff now, asked that question. I, I did have a, a couple for you, and that is, um, right, right now, you're, you've got these programs going on right now, they're just in multiple different buildings.
Correct.
Right? Why do they have to be in the same building to-
Well, it's a good question.
For twelve million dollars, do I really care if they're all in the same building?
One of the main design features of this new facility is a mock hospital floor and clinical space, and one of the great things about having that space all in one, one location is you will, it will allow us for our nursing students, our paramedic students, our nursing assistant students to work together in a simulated hospital, uh, scenario, so that they can, uh, broaden, in, in other words, we're teaching in silos right now, and this is a, a national model. Central, uh, Catawba Valley Community College has a, a great example of a mock hospital facility, and what it will allow us to do is consolidate all that into one area. The building design includes, uh, a bay for a paramedic's, uh, ambulance to be able to roll in and simulate all of those activities. We have invested quite a bit of money in simulation technology, uh, sim mannequins, and, uh, what this project would allow us to do was to create a more realistic facility that really mocks and, and truly contextualizes what goes on in the real world for nursing and allied health and other allied health students.
What happens to all the space that you're using for those programs now that are in other buildings? We, are you gonna end up with an excess of empty rooms that we've gotta heat and-
One of our, our certi- certified nursing assistant programs in our Cherry Street building, uh, which was built in the early sixties, and we have closed off that entire building with the exception of the bottom floor to house the CNA program. Um, the reason that we've closed off the building is the HVA system is literally on its last leg, and, uh, the cost to replace the HVA system in that building is not worth, is not worth it because of the age of the building. A number of years ago, we had some, a study done to see if we wanted to renovate that building, and because of the asbestos and the need for an elevator and so forth, it was determined that that building was obsolete and we'd be better off building, um, which is one of the reasons why we're talking allied health building now. We've got to move that program, uh, that building would likely be demolished and we'd use it for parking. Currently, our nursing program is how, is housed in our science building. Those labs, that lab space was built in nineteen seventy. Currently, we are allowed by the State Board of Nursing, a hundred and twenty slots for nursing students, but because of our current facilities, we only have between ninety and ninety-five students, because we're just limited by our space. A new allied health building with that type of technology and, and space would allow us to reach that hundred and twenty-person capacity, but also potentially grow it to a hundred and fifty-person capacity. So, uh, the facility needs is not only related to actual space, but also is very much related to the growth of our nursing program.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
You make things that were built in the seventies sound very old. I really do not like that.
Well, I apologize, it, uh, we have, we-
(laughing) Was a white elephant gift to the college from the Davis Hospital Foundation. It does not meet any code, any standard, and Mr. Norman will tell you, he got hung up in the bathroom trying to get out. (laughing)
And that is our, that is our Cherry Street facility.
Let's not ask him any more questions.
Where we, where we currently house our, our nursing program is, is in, is in the Greer Science Building, and, uh, the great thing about the possibility of an allied health building, not only consolidating all our programs into one efficient location, but also will enable us to expand on our natural science offerings, which are areas of growth on our, on our campus. Uh, many of our students who are enrolled at the college are college transfer students, and they need and require space for chemistry labs and biology labs. We will be able to take that space and create modernized chemistry and biology lab space.
Thank you. Okay. Any other questions?
Not for Dr. Brewer, I've got one alibi question for Dr. Cash. Uh, it's okay.
I'm sure there's no more from Dr. Brewer. Everybody okay there?
Okay there.
Okay. Thanks, sir.
Um, uh, during one of the previous question, questioning, it was mentioned that, that your board or your staff doesn't believe that there's a need for capital?
I don't think that's-
That these projects aren't, aren't, aren't needed, that what y'all really need is current states?
That statement, that statement was not made. I did not say it that way.
Okay.
What I said was their primary concern was current expense. I didn't say they had no concern about capital, but if they could choose between one or the other, they would like increased current expense funds. They have said that publicly, they've said it to me privately several times. Don't overstate the argument.
That's correct. I mean, I think in a grossly underfunded education system, we have dire needs in both areas, but for right now, uh, our current expense is the definite priority, although we definitely have capital needs, and if we don't address the capital needs now, you know, they will continue to grow and be more expensive later.
Okay. All right. Cool. I just wanted to get that understood.
Thank you.
Okay. I think we got that. You ready to do memo number eleven?
Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna invite Susan Robertson up, our finance director, and she's gonna go through with the, uh, legal requirements of what we are here to, uh, present to you tonight and provide you some financial information that will go along with the requests that you've heard.
Thank you. I believe that, um, the clerk provided you with an updated copy of the resolution and the notice of intent. The first step that needs to be taken by the Board of Commissioners is to adopt the preliminary findings resolution. So before you, it's a resolution making certain findings and determinations, authorizing the filing of an application with the local government commission, and appointing bond counsel in connection with the proposed issuance of school bonds and community college bonds by the county. As a part of this, the board does find that the preliminary studies have been completed to demonstrate the need for financing the cost of various public school improvements and community college improvements for the county. Second, the board wishes to commence the- Second, the board wishes to commence the procedures for the authorization of school bonds and community college bonds to finance the capital projects. Third, the capital projects to be funded by the proposed bonds are necessary and expedient, and the amount of proposed bonds is adequate and not excessive to fund said capital projects. D, the debt management and the budgetary and fiscal management policies of the county have been carried out in compliance with applicable law. And C, the increase in taxes, if any, necessary to service the proposed debt will not be excessive. The financial information that I've provided to you would estimate a 5.5 cent tax increase if it's placed on early with the first issue. Section 2, the county, this resolution authorizes the county manager and the director of finance and administration to file an application of the county with the North Carolina Local Government Commission for approval of not exceeding 151,500,000 school bonds and 12 million in community college bonds of the county. It also authorizes the clerk to the board to publish the notice of intent, and I believe that's scheduled for June the 20th. It appoints the law firm of Womble, Carlisle, Sandrigen Rice as bond counsel to the county for the authorization, sale, and issuance of proposed bonds, and it authorizes appropriate officers of the county to do any and all things necessary, appropriate, or convenient to carry into effect the provisions of the resolution. And this resolution becomes effective immediately upon adoption. Now, I would ask you to turn over to the notice of intent that will be published on June 20th in the Statesville Record and Landmark, and it, it's notifying the public that the county intends to submit this application to the local government commission. And within that is very much the same information that would be included in the questions on the ballot to go to referendum on November 4th. I won't read that to you unless you just want me to.
I think so.
Now, let me say, once the referendum, if it, when it goes to referendum, that doesn't mean that the next day we'll turn around and have the money. Additional steps have to be taken. In fact, typically, we don't, bonds aren't issued until bids are in hand. For instance, I looked back and when we, when the 2005 referendum was held and the 2000, and the bonds were approved, actually, we were on sort of the same calendar as we are now. July 5th, 2005, the first resolution was approved. August 2nd, the adopted, the board adopted the bond order. However, then, there was allowed by law special referendums just for bonds, and that special referendum was held October 11th. At that time, there were 82,736 registered voters. 10,499 votes were cast to approve the bonds for schools, and 5,150 were voted against the bonds for the schools. 10,068 votes were cast for the community college, and 5,413 were voted against the community college bond. The next step for that was on January 3rd of 2006, the county adopted the first resolution authorizing the issuance of bonds, and those were for Iredo, Statesville schools. They were sold on January 4th, 2006, and the funds were available, I believe, on February 1st. So, this resolution starts the process to submit the application to the local government commission that will be due in their hands. I may need to drive it to Raleigh on July 1st, and on July 15th, you'll be presented with a bond order. It'll be the first reading, and then the first meeting in August, a public hearing, and the request for you to, to adopt a bond order to move forward. Are there any questions?
Any questions, Ms. Robertson?
If, if, if we, if we make this motion or whatever, and then down the road, some of these, I mean, these figures we're using are estimates. If the, if the call, and, and they've got contingencies on there that are supposed to make to guarantee absolutely that these projects should not go over in cost. If they don't need to spend that full amount, we're not required to borrow that full amount. Is that a correct statement?
That's correct.
Okay. All right. So, this is, this figure on the bond is a worst-case scenario.
And it's a not-to-exceed number.
Okay. Anything else from Ms. Robertson? All right.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Is the, what was open for discussion or a motion? It's your pleasure.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion to adopt a resolution making certain findings and determinations authorizing the filing of an application with the local government commission and appointing bond counsel in connection with the proposed issuance of school bonds and community college bonds by the county.
Okay. Any discussion on that motion? I've done too much talking. I'm going to say a few words tonight. I want to clear up a couple of things. Those who, the folks who come and ask us for money, when they get what they want or they don't get what they want, they tend to describe the results and the terms that they choose. Let me be very clear. No one here tonight has said that Mooresville High School does not need serious renovation. I think we just came to a different conclusion on how much that should cost. I routed my information from the DPI, the State Board of Education, and a couple of civil engineers who'd rather not have their name mentioned in public. One thing I have learned in all my years on this board is facts do not speak for themselves. You have to enunciate facts. The other thing that I've learned is increasingly, I'm a pretty boring guy. I told my dad, I came home from college, and I told him, I said, "Dad, I think I'm going to study economics." And he said, "Well, son," he said, "economists tell you 100 ways to get a date if they don't know any girls." But I sit here and I look at these things, and I guess I'm the closest thing you got to a paid economist here, because something I continue to study. And it is the dismal science, but let me, let me put it, I hope, in terms that, that folks can understand. Let me first confess my reticence to borrow $163.5 million in the current economic climate. This amounts to almost 100% of the annual county budget that we approved a few minutes ago. In this budget, total real property value in the 2014-2015 budget are expected to rise by only 1.4%. Personal property values are expected to decline 10.45%. Now, this decrease can be attributable a substantial part of the changeover in the way motor vehicle taxes were collected, and we're coming down from a high, but a sufficient percentage of this is depreciation and loss of property value and capital equipment. That is manufacturing equipment and plants that is depreciated and has not been replaced by new capital investment. I have said for many years, if you want to take the pulse of your local economy, look at how capital equipment investment is coming into your community. That is the best indicator of how much confidence the business community has in the future. If that capital investment is increasing, then they expect things to be good in the future. If it is not, they're worried, and you should be too. And what you're seeing is capital equipment in this county depreciating, and it's not being replaced with new equipment. Business people are very cautious. They, the Wall Street Journal says there's approximately $3 trillion available, available to loan today, but there are $3 trillion fewer borrowers than the money available. The net effect is the property tax value is expected to decrease in total by $160.3 million. These are numbers given from the county manager's budget message. Sales tax revenues are expected to rise 7%, but represent only 8% of the total revenues, while property taxes represent over 60%. I have said for the last several years that our local economy is a microcosm of the national economy, and that we can continue to expect revenue decreases far less than the historical averages that we have historically seen. The accommodative monetary policy of the Federal Reserve as it relates to bond purchases and artificially low interest rates can hold up our economy for a while, but only pro-growth fiscal policy will cause the economy to grow. Such policy enactment is not in the offering. Therefore, we cannot expect in the foreseeable future, a significant growth year over year in property tax or sales tax revenues. What does this mean? In a historical four-year property value cycle, which I categorize as one year of reevaluation and three of non-evaluation, you can, you could expect historically an increase in revenue of over 40% in those four years. Taking the amount of money per penny of revenue for 2015, projected in this budget of $2,39,325, and applying historical averages, we can expect a penny on the tax rate in this, in a historical cycle to bring in $2,914,641, leaving the tax rate the same. However, on the spreadsheet provided for the consideration of this referendum, the per penny in 2019 is not $2,914,641, but only $2,143,706, or eight, nearly $800,000 less, which means that the debt load for the next several years must be borne by the existing taxpayers and tax base with virtually no help from economic expansion. There is little, if any, possibility of tax relief in the future. Compare this to the late '90s and early 2000s, when hundreds of millions of dollars were spent on school buildings, and the tax rate was lower in 2011 than it was in 1994. The invisible hand of Adam Smith has evaporated. Remember that in Moody's assessment of our financial conditions, one of the things that could make their outlook go down as far as our credit rating was the incurring of significant new debt. Incurring significant new debt of a hundred, incurring debt of $163.5 million, in my mind, is significant debt. Nevertheless, an argument can be made to allow the voters to decide. However, it is the inequity of this proposal that is worthy of consideration. I understand that it is, it is not possible to totally get to equity because of the problems with the structural integrity of some aspects of the Mooresville High School building. But in analyzing the thing as well as I know I can, and talking to people who are experts in construction and some of them in public school construction, this project is significantly oversized for the student population. It will be significantly used by the community, and if that is the case, the community should help contribute to the cost, and it should not contribute or exacerbate the equity of school financing. I continued to ask myself early on, why $42 million when in Davie County, you could build a high school for $56 million and buy land? The reason is, this is a huge building. If you want to get a comparison to how large it is, the Katz Building in Troutman is 42,000 square feet. That's a big building. This building is 3,000 square foot more than that. It is a huge building. Therefore, I cannot, according, if I follow the recommendations of the DPI, the State Board of Education, and what it does to exacerbate the inequity of the thing, I cannot support this bond referendum, and I am sorry.
Chairman, I've got something to say.
Okay.
I think all the questions and concerns are valid. At, you know, at the end of the day, these are critical needs, some that can no longer be kicked down the road, kicked the can down the road. It's a safety issue for our kids. It's a liability issue for our county. This board, with my predecessor, promised to put a bond on the ballot November 2014, and we need to keep our word to do that. We talk about the inequity, and that has been explained sufficient to me and most people that I've talked to. The community is contributing. Everybody in this room and everybody in this county pays taxes. I think the voters are smart enough to decide if they want this bond or not, but they should deserve, they deserve the opportunity to pass it up or down. And I think that's the point I'm getting here. I totally understand Chairman Johnson's concern. I share a lot of them with him. But I'll say this again, and I've said it before. If the bonds pass and the economy takes a downturn, the commissioners have the authority, I'm sure with your approval, as was the case before, some of the projects can be slowed or stopped, not to put the county or the taxpayers in an undue burden. So, for these reasons alone, we have to honor our word. The voters are smart enough in this county to vote for or against a project, but you guys deserve a right to have that opportunity, in my opinion.
I'd like to make a comment. I believe the citizens, when they're voting, will look at their checkbooks and determine if they can afford the bond. Not every bond that has been presented to the citizens have passed, and I believe the citizens are intelligent enough to figure out if we can afford it or not.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Mr. Johnson, and all the folks that are with you, we thank you for coming and bringing on the information. Dr. Edwards and all your people, we thank you for all the work you've done. I'm ready to make a motion.
We have a motion on the table, don't we?
Right.
Ms. Robertson's made a motion.
Second a motion, then we're ready.
Okay.
I've had enough.
All right. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? No. Motion carries 4-1.
Next item on the agenda is a request from the Tax Administration to approve refunds and releases for May. These are all in order, and there are no county, or no commissioners' names on the rolls.
Let me, can I say one more thing about that? I am, I am, I'm not a bad loser. It is, it is now the policy of this board to proceed in these, with these bonds, and I will assist in this endeavor. I will not impede the progress of these bonds as they move forward. I accept that it is the policy of this county that we do that. A policy that I did not vote for, nevertheless, it is the policy, and I will assist in the process in any way I can.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I'd like, thank you. And I'd like to say thank you to Ron and staff, Susan, Ritha. These guys have put a lot of work in the last several weeks, and they have a lot still to do, so I wanted to say thank you for that also.
Okay. Let's go. Okay, let's go, Mr. Smith. I hadn't had supper.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve what?
Whatever it is. The refunds and releases for May.
Yes, there was an administrative matter.
Okay.
And because Malia sat through this whole thing, I'm at least going to say that charter schools have, have impacted the refund, the refunds for this, for the month of May, and we knew that this was coming, she briefed you about this in the budget session, but thank you for coming, Malia.
Malia, glad to see you. You can go home now. All right. Take care.
Was there a vote on that?
No, I made a motion.
I made a motion. Miss Griffith, she's in a hurry, she must be hungry too. All in favor of Miss Griffith's motion to approve these, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
The truth is, I've drank too much water.
Okay.
And the final administrative matter is a request for approval of the May 20th and 22nd, 2014 minutes.
I have a, I have a correction on the 22nd, I'm sorry. Retha, on the back page of the, page eight of the minutes of May 22nd, paragraph where I'm making my statement, it's, I'm sorry, it's bypassed, P-A-S-S, not bypassed the voters, it's bypassed. And then the last sentence of that paragraph does not make sense, you need to remove the word "the," "other," and "that," and then that's what I said. I apologize. With those changes, I make a motion we approve.
Okay. Motion to approve as amended, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay. Appointments to boards and commissions, Juvenile Crime Prevention Council.
I nominate Mark Fawn, Paula Patterson, Vicky Dane, Leah Byers, and Dan McLean.
Okay. Any other nominations? I move with closed floor nominations, point these folks back, a commation, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ms. Griffith, I'm helping all I can.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, on the Arrow County Planning Board, were there not three appointments?
We're not there yet.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I apologize.
Okay. Dennis Hutchins. Okay. I don't know. Is that you, Hutch?
Yeah.
Okay.
I make a motion, we nominate Jeff McNeely, Harry Tumis, and Dennis Hutchins to the planning board.
Okay. Any other nominations? I move with closed floor nominations, point these three, I buy a commation, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Region F Aging Advisory Committee, two appointments.
Make a motion, we put Barbara Barrier and Liz Burns back on the board.
Any other nominations? There are none, I move we close four nominations, point these two back, a commation, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Boards of Planning Board, one appointment.
Make a motion, we approve Alan Brawley.
All right, any other nomination?
I will not pop, it's okay. I will not pop, it's okay. It's a speed read.
I move with closed floor nominations, point Mr. Brawley back, a commation, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any unfinished business? Public comment period, I think we did have one lady sign up, is she still here? Would you like to speak, ma'am? And I'm sorry, I had your name phone drunk. Yep.
I've attended two county commissioners' meetings this year, and asked to speak at both of them, and was told that I could not. That's disappointing, and apparently showing up at a public meeting after viewing the, the agenda online, printing it out, and asking to speak is the inappropriate way to, to give input in this county, so apparently I'm doing it wrong. I'm shocked at the, the lack of input that the taxpayers are asked for when we're talking about the biggest debt offering in our county's history, according to what's published in the newspaper. I have sat and listened to the school board representatives talk for I don't know how many hours, and now you're timing my three minutes, and as a taxpayer, I think we should get a little bit more voice. These bonds would raise property taxes by 14%, according to the newspaper. High property taxes cause foreclosures, and property taxes are a very regressive form of tax. I'm here to voice opposition to placing a bond or debt referendum on the ballot for ISS and for NGSD in the form that they are currently worded. I do feel they're inequitable, with Mooreville getting about half of the funds for 22% of the students. I'm concerned about the wording of the referendum, and even after looking online, I couldn't find how the referendum would be exactly worded. I'm questioning this because I don't understand it, it's not a rhetorical question, I really don't understand who gets to choose the wording of the referendum. The devil is in the details of how it's worded. Many people in the general public will be confused by the word "bonds" because people invest money in bonds as an asset. Will the referendum wording make clear that these bonds would be a county debt, which would increase property taxes by approximately 14% and may result in foreclosures if the property owners cannot repay their portion of the county debt? Will it be clear that our homes are the collateral for the debt that's being proposed? Who chooses the wording of the referendum questions? And will it be clear that the 14% will be property taxes on our homes and other real estate? I ask that the word "debt" be used as an explanation to, so people can understand what the word "bond" is referring to. Many people might not understand it. I strongly oppose ISS and MSGSD having bond, or what I call debt request, on the ballot, but if it does appear, the taxpayers should understand that they're not an asset, and they're approving debt, which could involve raising property taxes and foreclosures on their homes. And I do ask that that be clear, because this is what the newspaper called, "The Biggest Debt Offering in Our County's History," and I thank Mr. Johnson for your vote tonight.
Thank you, ma'am. If you'll, Mr. Strunk, if you would like to contact me, you can, or if you'd like to contact our clerk and explain, she can explain to you the process of addressing the board. I'm sorry for any misunderstanding that's been, that's come about. Although I disagree with these folks up here this evening, they're good folks, and I don't know that I've ever seen any of them ever deny anybody an opportunity to speak, but we'd be glad to discuss that with you further.
No comment.
And we, just a second, and we will, I believe that, correct me, it's been a while since I've done this, Mr. Smith and Miss Robinson, you may help. This board will approve the wording that is on the ballot, is that right?
Yes.
Okay, if you would like to come and address the board at any time in the future regarding that wording, you'd contact our clerk. Generally speaking, it's a good idea to contact her by noon Thursday prior to the meeting.
Also, if you look on the county webpage, you will find, our phone numbers are there. I know my cellphone is listed, my home phone is listed, my work phone is listed, my place of employment is listed, and my email is listed, and I've answered emails, I've answered phones, all of us are accessible to the voters, not just at a public comment period. We, well, people that were sitting in this room called me today, they've called Chairman Johnson, they've called us on the board, and our information is there, and we are all accessible, so we encourage you to...
They called me a lot of different things.
Yes, they do. We encourage the voters to contact us.
Okay. Is that it? Other than closed session?
Closed session.
I'd move we go into closed session.
Mr. Chairman, real quick, I have a multi-page report on county organizational structure under county managers.
Oh, okay.
I'm Joe. I do have one piece of business.
Shot.
I will be out of, out of the county from Monday, June 30th until Friday, July 4th, and I would, I would like to ask that we, that you appoint Beth Dirks as the acting manager while I'm out, and that would require a vote of the board.
Okay.
I assure you, she can do a very, very good job.
I'm sure she can. I would have moved that to your point, Ms. Dirks is the acting county manager in the absence of Mr. Ron Smith. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
All right, now I move we go into closed session, General Statute 143, 31811A6, Guard Personnel, all in favor, say aye.
You're going to beat me first, go ahead. Go ahead.[1128.75]